All right, the hour of seven o'clock having come and passed, this meeting will come under order of the City of Urbana City Council Committee, Committee Meeting of the Whole. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smye?
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
All right, quorum being present, are there any additions to the agenda? Charlie?
I'm going to move a quick change here. Items eight and 11 up to immediately follow public input since those are, those should be very quick items.
All right, so Charlie has asked, has moved that agenda items number eight and 11 be moved to the top of the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, the ayes have it. So the agenda will be amended according to the motion.
Okay, one more. Mike, one more.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to move Eric's amendment in support of the U of I as an additional item, new item, say 13.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm not familiar with what that is, but...
He sent it around via email on, over the weekend.
Okay. I've been busy trying to generate sales tax for the City of Urbana, so I missed that, but...
We all have our niches.
All right, so all those in favor of moving Eric's added agenda item to be, well, at the end of the agenda, or are we...
Yeah, it's item number 13, yeah.
Okay, to add Eric's agenda item as item number 13, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
Staff report?
Pardon me?
Staff report?
Yeah. Okay, now, staff reports, please. Madam Mayor.
I received a letter from Carol Ammons. I'd like to read it to you. Dear Mayor Pressing, foremost, I want to thank you and your staff for your tremendous assistance and support for nearly two years. You and your staff are one of the many reasons why I've enjoyed serving on the Urbana City Council. Due to my recent election to the General Assembly, I regrettably must tender my resignation from the City Council effective today. This is dated January 9th, which was Friday. As you are well aware, this January 14th, I will be sworn in as State Representative for the 103rd District. Prior to my seeking the position of State Representative, I reviewed the existing case law and learned that I could not serve both positions. The members of the City Council have effectively demonstrated its commitment to providing excellent service to the residents of the City of Urbana. I am so honored to have been a part of such a great body. I look forward to working with you and the council in the near future. Please convey my appreciation to the members of the City Council for their support and my best wishes for a successful completion of the term. I have enjoyed and appreciated the opportunity to have served, afforded to me by the people of Urbana. In service, Carol C. Ammons.
I'll say that. So any word on a successor?
I have a couple of people that have applied, and I have 60 days to do it. I don't think I want to take 60 days, but other people are welcome to apply.
All right. Appreciate the update. Okay, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, December 8th, 2014 is our motion.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. I'm sorry. All right. Dennis?
Madam, Mr. Chairman, I, there was one correction I noticed. Although it correctly indicates that I led the meeting of the last Committee of the Whole at the last page and the last line, it indicates that Eric Jacobson adjourned it, and that was not true. I, Dennis Roberts did. So it was just a typo or a memo from, from a previous, perhaps, copy.
Well, let it be noted that the far better-looking Dennis Roberts actually...
No comment. No, I agree completely.
So is there any objection to that correction? Okay, that'll be accepted by acclamation. Okay, yes, sir.
I had one on the middle of page three where I moved to send to ordinance to Council Order Woman Marlin seconded, and then it said motion carried by voice vote. It actually didn't carry until after we had the amendment discussion below that, so if we did this in the right order, that motion carried by voice vote should be moved down to the bottom of the page after disposition of the amendment.
All right, is there any objection to that amendment? Seeing none. Are we good, Madam Clerk? Okay. All right, so with those suggested amendments, all those in favor of approving the minutes of the previous meeting say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Okay, time for public input. So I have several, hand growing, numbers of folks wishing to address the City Council. I'll take them in the order I have them here. Beldon Fields wishes to address at the time of the item presented regarding tasers. Ricardo Diaz wishes to address the committee before agendas, agenda items are presented regarding tasers and CPRB, so, Mr. Diaz.
My name is Ricardo Diaz, and I live at 1002 East Main. I recognize most of you as my neighbors in one way or the other, so I have items, well, previous items six and seven, I want to share a couple of comments. Number one, I am a member of the Civilian Police Review Board, and I, both items relate to the opposition, but I, I'm also, being a resident, have feelings that maybe not, don't get expressed on the board the same way. Number one, the taser policy. I was one of the two members of the Board that participated in collaborating with the chief and his staff to develop the policy that is being proposed, and I'd like to recognize that just as the legal department says at the end of their recommendation, meaning they have no recommendation, poor con, the police review board also has no authority to say yes or no to the policy. We spent a lot of hours collaborating, elaborating on what a policy might be, and at the same time, our own personal feeling of the eventual use of the policy, I think, is what concerns me, and that is the following. Since the policy was written and I have talked to many people, I feel like I am surrounded by people that don't agree that tasers should be purchased and be an option. My own feelings are that there ought to be an alternative to using a handgun, but I think as the chief has said, the taser is not an option to a handgun when the, when the handgun is required, when their life is in danger, and I understand that very much. But the use of a taser implies damage to a person, and I talked to several police officers, but one that was a veteran of, I think he said about 20 years, he said, "We don't need them," to me, and he wouldn't elaborate because he felt, you know, this is sensitive. But another one that had been, that has only been here a few years, said, "I am so conflicted." And it gave me more reason to think through, we need to have an option, but at the same time, darn it, an option where a lot of the people disagree is maybe not the best option. But the second thing that I want to say about that is, this went before the police review board as an opportunity to collaborate if it were approved, that is, if the tasers were approved. I often, in my life in other areas, fight for a seat at the table to be able to contribute to why things are done. I could not allow the opportunity to be at the table and to at least input into a policy, but I am afraid that the way things went down in the last couple of months, it seems as if the police review board approve of the policy. The police review board had no authority to approve the policy or to recommend that the policy would move forward. It doesn't, as far as I can tell, in the statute. I can't say that while I am myself conflicted, I can't reject tasers, I have to say there are many people around me that do.
You have one minute, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you. So I want you to do it if, that if you vote for them today, it can't be the responsibility of the review board, and it can't be your responsibility, or the police themselves, it is, the responsibility is on you because you guys are the ones that are approving it, and there will be incidents in which it would be very tough to decide. My last point is just to say, if I'm a member of the police review board, item seven, which is a recommendation to change the rules of the police review board in electing them or choosing them, I think at least we ought to have been consulted, we have, we need to have had at least a little bit of discussion, a little bit of airtime, and that hasn't happened, and there are many reasons why it might be right, but for me, having over 40,000 people in Urbana, surely we can find current residents, especially, I'm thinking, residents that may not be citizens, and that would include immigrants, so thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I would like to respond to that. Grace Mitchell was one of the original members, and she is a longtime resident of Urbana and worked as a counselor at the high school, and she moved to Champaign, so that's why this change was made. I'm proposing it because I think she has unique skills, and on other boards and commissions, occasionally, we do have someone from Champaign, like we had Greg Chu, although he lived in Champaign, he was a teacher for many years in Urbana, and I think he did contribute quite a lot to Urbana, so that was the rationale, so, you know, if people want to refer it to the civilian review board to consider, they don't do the appointing, but I think that she did a good job when she was on there, and she's willing to serve again, so...
Yeah, and I would agree, people that want to serve is good. Because these two items are next to each other, I think it's even more glaring. Why would I want somebody that doesn't presently live in Urbana to be deciding whether a particular taser was used, for example, in an erroneous way? It just, it rubs my personal feeling as a neighbor to say, to think that people contribute, and I love that, and I, you, I respect your, the authority and the work that you do, but I think eventually it has to come down to neighbor with neighbor, and that's the part that I think is, perhaps, that the review board ought to consider and air it a little longer. Thank you.
Dennis?
And since you've contributed to some of the construction of the policy and had more opportunity to evaluate that, do you feel like that the policy that we're being presented is fairly strong? Does it need tweaking? Are you pretty much happy with the result as an individual so far?
Yeah, so there were two of us from the police review that participated in the process. You know, we should not avoid the hard topic. I'm the minority in the room, there are no African-Americans in the process, and just the stats tell us that the use will eventually be part of a race discussion, so we might as well admit it now and say that something ought to be considered, at least in the pre-discussion, not just in the post-discussion. But, on the other hand, I have to commend both the chief and his staff because they incorporated as many comments in, both in restraint and in consideration of other people's opinions as to a policy existing. Do I feel comfortable with a policy? I would say yes. If it is approved, if the use, if the purchase of tasers is approved, I think this is a strong policy. It is not the strongest that it could be, but I think that we worked hard at putting lots of constraints, lots of, you know, both from the recording, the handling of the recordings. I mean, there is a lot to constrain, and I think that we should, we should be honest in saying, I think that the, well, I address it as the chief, but, you know, his staff are included, they worked very hard to be inclusive of all those thoughts, from the letter from ACLU, from, you know, the comments and the practices around us in the other unit, in the other LEAs. Frankly, I was surprised as I saw the records that other, other units around us have, which is very minimal recording of what happened and where it was, and I, we upped that quite a bit. I feel comfortable that, that given the good disposition in which, with which the policy was drafted, that we have a good chance at least at reviewing. We put in, at least at the beginning, a heavy review of every use. So that, again, that would seem to fortify that if you approve that the, that they are purchased, that we could have lots of review, and I think we wrote in, or we proposed that it, you know, in six months and in a year, we come back to the situation. Again, does that imply, or does that commit us to saying that we agree that they should be purchased? I don't think that the Board had that opportunity to say so because it doesn't have it legally, so it's only offline that we discussed it. Is that enough of an answer?
That's great, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Eric?
So I want to say first that I was very favorably impressed with the policy. It was very consistent, it was very consistent both with, you know, what I had said would be my conditions to support use of tasers. It also was very consistent and probably consciously so with the ACLU guidelines for taser use. I mean, almost one for one for one. So, but I am really concerned about the question of whether these guidelines have any force unless the council explicitly includes the guidelines with what we adopt. I think you've, you've told us that we bear the responsibility, that you are only suggesting, and that it really isn't city policy unless we pass it. That's your understanding. Is that also, Mr. Rent, is that also your understanding?
I think it depends on exactly what you're talking about.
Okay.
If you're talking about the ordinance that's been called the council today...
Right.
That has to do specifically with CPRB review. The policy discussions that Mr. Diaz and Mr. Dossip participated in actually wasn't the specific UPD or the Department of Police Department policy regarding taser use. So there's the policy of the ordinance regarding CPRB taser appointment review, and then there's the part of the policy.
So what is the status of those, of those guidelines with respect to being UPD policy? Have they been adopted, or...
That's a question.
Which is a question really for the chief.
Want me to answer it now?
Yeah. Well...
Why don't, why don't we wait, why don't we wait for this during debate? Yeah, I think we've probably strayed a bit from public participation, but we can flesh this out during the debate of the issue.
Sure.
Any more questions from Mr. Diaz? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, as long as you brought up the ACLU recommendations, there was one difference that I noticed, and that was the recommendation that officers not be required to experience tasing before they have a taser, and I think the ACLU's rationale on that partly was that if, if you experience it one way as a 200-pound police officer, you might experience it quite differently as a 120-pound young person, or woman, or older person. So what you experience, not only because of your personal differences, but because of the kind of ideal conditions under which the officers are tased, would, could cause them to have a misperception of the, of what they would, what kind of damage they would do, and may, they may end up underestimating the damage or the experience. So I think that was the main one, the main rationale. I think I have a couple other questions on that same issue, but I didn't get to hear that part of your discussion. Could you kind of fill in your reasoning there?
Yeah, and in fact, it was misquoted by the press, and so I think we should clear it up. I think ACLU recommendation was that the officers in training should not be tased. In the discussion and drafting of the policy, three out of four in the room, as we were writing it up, we said, "No, the officers should experience what it feels like to be tased," and we agreed, we voted, you know, in that small group as to what to put in the policy. We watched a lot of videos of people being tased. We watched videos of people being tased and it malfunctioning, and therefore, you know, the officers having to do something else. I have to say, I don't want anybody hurt, permanently hurt, officer or, you know, civilian. A taser doesn't always work, not, sometimes because of the size of the person, sometimes because it seems the way it connects, and so they have to redo it. We saw one guy that got tased three times, and it still didn't stop him. I've since watched a lot of videos of others in which the person is tased once, and they'll do anything not to be tased again. And the size of the person matters, but sometimes the connection makes a difference. Most people that are tased, it looks like they don't want to ever be tased, and they comply. The records that I saw of other departments seem to bear that out, that people, you know, the...
Any further questions?
So the ACLU didn't recommend that, and we disagreed with ACLU, and we put it in there. Lastly, related to that is, there is one further discrepancy, and that is that when somebody's fleeing, and you might want to do that when you get to that part, when somebody is fleeing, the use of the test, of the taser is permitted, or is, under policy or guidelines, is permitted if, and I don't know the exact language, but violent felony, if the person has been accused of, you know, if they're a danger, it seems like it would imply. I don't know. I honestly don't know what constitutes that and how an officer could decide because it's, they have so little time sometimes to make decisions that are going to harm and whatever, so, so there is another difference there in what was recommended and what eventually came out in the guidelines.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you, sir. All right, so Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood did not indicate on the slip any specific concerns, but I'm assuming it's the ongoing concern of...
Now, which one? Is it by myself? What did it say?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I'm not able to read your handwriting. Cards from France?
Yes.
Okay, cards from France.
Kind of dressed too warmly here. On Friday afternoon, I received a package from France. I should say, my husband received a package from France, and I was not home, and late Friday evening, when I got home, he said, "Oh, you got a package from France." And so we were busy, 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 so I didn't get an opportunity to open it until Saturday afternoon, and when I opened it, I was at the radio station getting ready to go on. I was so excited when I opened it that I called Dennis Roberts because I was so touched. It was from Madame Nadia, and when I opened it, all of these cards came out. Of course, I had looked at them, and some of the cards, written in English, and she and a number of the people knew the physician. I haven't talked to anyone other than Dennis Roberts and Kermit Harden's wife today about I was so touched because she, the ones who remember Madame Nadia, who was there, she was the physician that kind of followed us around. She was so excited about the Americans who liberated France from the Germans, and anybody who know why we went, I guess, let me step back. The Sister City program, you know, we went to France, met the mayor and all, and we had a wonderful time there, and during the time we were there, you know, they had this, had this seventh year of, when the, the American soldiers liberated the French from the Germans, and we had a wonderful celebration during that period of time. Thousands of people from all over the world essentially was there, and I don't have but three minutes, so, and she's looking at her time right now, but the bottom line is, there was about 20 cards and sent, and some of the cards are sold, and I don't have time to read some of them here, and the reason I called Dennis, because he's with the sentence, the Sister City program, and it was too big for me. You know, I could have done what she asked, and that is transfer these cards to veterans. I read this to him, and I said, "If I could just take a little time to read this, just a little bit, I want to, I want you to transfer these cards to all the people, the veterans who came here, and to those who couldn't come, and to those who will come one day, to the families of disabled people, alive or dead." And she mean the, you know, the veterans and their families. Could they have rest in peace? And she says a little bit more, but that, you know, it's kind of hard to read, and...
You have one minute.
Okay, and so I know you're very busy, but I will be glad to receive a few notes from, from these veterans, and essentially she goes on, on to say that, you know, how they liberated them, and about, talking a little bit about freedom, and... talking a little bit about freedom in this card, and some of the other cards. I wrote a few notes about the liberation and the freedom and D-Day, and, I mean, it's just so touching. I've read a few of the comments to Anne today, Anne Harden, and I'm going to see to it, and we're going to try to see to that Kermit gets one of the cards, and other veterans, as I told Dennis, that, you know, I could probably transfer it, but it's too big for me to take care of this. I feel that maybe the Sister City people, or maybe the city council people, or someone else, you know, can give it to the right veterans or the right people, because they need to be able to read these cards. She, as she said in my car, "I'm learning English for about four months myself," maybe it's six months now, because she was doing it like about four months. But she's a physician. She's a gynecologist. I mean, and she, if you remember Mr. Smythe, do you remember her? Anne remembered her. She was the one with the reddish hair, and she was kind of following us around a little bit, because she was... Do you remember her, Madame Mayor? Kind of heavyset, 50-ish? But anyway, I remember her, because she kind of follows me a lot, you know, and she wanted to hug me, you know, and, you know, and I'm a hugger, too. But anyway, these are some of the cards, and the names are not on it, because she wanted us to put the names on them to a different one of the veterans. And so I feel that we should do the wishes, because some of them might want to write her back in English. And do like maybe what I did during Christmas time, had my friend, who was a French teacher in Champaign and Bana schools, that were writing in French, back to some of the mayor of Teyonville, and some of the other people I met, to send Christmas cards. But I think this would be something wonderful for our veterans. And given what just happened in France, you know, and the terrorism and all that, I think this... She sent it on December the 18th, and we can see here, December the 18th, and it just arrived here to my house on Friday, the 9th of January, you know, and given what's going on, you know, God works in mysterious ways, wonders to perform. We don't know why. But as Anne and I was talking about an hour on the phone, I shouldn't have kept her that long, because given what's going on with them. But we had a good talk, and she told me to tell every one of you that Kermit is coming along really nicely, and thank each and every one of you for all that, you know, the support and everything, since they've been back, you know, they got back on the 30th of December, and he's getting along nicely and all. And I think he's... Okay. But anyway, so I want to pass these on to Dennis, and I want to make sure, too, that I want to make sure, too, that Kermit gets one of these, and I will probably, maybe Dennis, she said, "You came to the hospital." You know, it was touching. We need, I mean, we can take a little time for this, I think. Kermit got all of these, and he didn't get an opportunity, because he was in the hospital, to be before those hundreds and hundreds of people from all over the world, where he was supposed to get that wonderful... Oh, okay. Award, you know, in Teyonville that day. But the gentleman who was able to get it, his daughter, and Anne and I talked about that, his daughter and the chaplain from France, and me, the representation of God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Ghost prayed while those two men, one a physician and one a medic, prayed when Kermit had that heart attack and fell right over on me. Am I right? And, but what happened?
Thank you.
And they worked on him. Anne said, "They've worked on him for so long." She didn't know how long. And we were right there praying. And do you know what? He lived, and they took him to the hospital, and he was in match for three days. But after that, the 30th, he came back to Champaign, and he's living right now. God is good, and the doctors did their job. So we worked all together. Working together works. And I'm going to sit down.
Thank you.
And you know what? One last thing. You know, my son, Herbert Dwayne Burnett, Sr., did Iraqi, what, Operation Iraqi Freedom, and Desert Storm. And I wanted to give him one, a card at church Sunday. But somebody said, "No, you give it to your husband right now on his behalf." But I gave the cards away. I think I gave them away. So I'm going to give him my card. You know, "Bitch, come and get my card for my son." My son, and I'm going to sit down.
All right. Thank you so much.
And Kermit got to get his card. He's our number one.
Got it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot, everyone.
Thank you very much, Evelyn.
So my next witness slip is the Reverend Dr. Evelyn and King James Underwood registering their ongoing concern about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. So thank you for that. All right, so next up, we have Brian Dolaner wishing to address the tasers and CPRB issue before the agenda item is presented.
Good evening. I'm Brian Dolaner. I live at 303 West Locust in Urbana. And again, I'm here expressing the concerns of our group, CU Citizens for Peace and Justice, who wants no tasers in Urbana. We want no tasers in Champaign. We know if Urbana greenlights tasers soon, Champaign will follow. And we have expressed in the past our real concerns, the health concerns, the concerns of abuse before the council. The chief in a letter that was provided for the meeting tonight said that any further discussion of tasers would be redundant, but we believe that there's still serious concerns. We, again, express our total opposition, but we also want to note that there have been public comments forwarded from individuals, comments which have not been incorporated into any final use of force policy. I think some other of my colleagues will speak to that. So we think there is still serious debate and deliberation that needs to take place here in these chambers. We wonder whether, what is the purpose of incorporating, including, public comment if it's not being included in the process? And secondly, I want to address the CPRB resolution to eliminate the residency requirement. Again, this has not been discussed, as I understand, before council. This has not been discussed among the Police Review Board itself. It's not clear exactly where this is coming from, although the mayor seems to suggest it's coming directly from her. We want to point out, and I've been attending meetings of the CPRB since its earliest conception in 2008, 2009, immediately, there was a concern there that individuals with felony records be able to serve. People have requested, they wanted to serve, they have valuable experience, they have put the past behind them, they want to serve on this board. And yet now, here it is, six years later, we still have not included anybody, or considered a change to the ordinance to allow individuals with felony records to serve on the council. And yet, out of the blue, we have this request from the mayor without any other individuals consulted, it appears, that now this amendment to the CPRB, a very serious, serious board, especially in light of the national situation, both situations in Ferguson and New York City, that this would come forward tonight in the new year, is very questionable. We have investigated and found that those who are on the Human Relations Commission in Urbana are all required to live in Urbana. We know that individuals who serve on the school board are required to live in Urbana. So we also believe that it should remain the case that individuals who serve on the Police Review Board in Urbana be from Urbana. We are most invested in this community, and there are many qualified people. This is a diverse community. I'd be happy to serve on the board if it were allowed. So again, I urge the council to throw out this residency requirement and consider, or reconsider, allowing somebody with a felony record on the board. We also find it questionable that this comes at a night when Ward Three seat, a historically African-American district, is not present, and there's a vacancy here in Ward Three. Ms. Carol Ammons has moved on, and she's in Springfield tonight.
You have one minute, Mr. Dolaner.
Why does this...
You have one minute.
I'm sorry?
You have one minute.
Okay, thank you. Why are these two proposals coming forward tonight when there's a vacancy in Ward Three, the historically African-American district? Both tasers and the CPRB of great concern to African-Americans locally, the NAACP, my group, CU Citizens for Peace and Justice, have both expressed deep concerns over these issues. And we believe the council should, again, I want to urge that you abandon this taser consideration, and remind you, there is a chance still to turn back. Thank you.
Dural Cruz, TIF surplus funds, would wish to address the committee before the agenda item.
Thank you. And I'll be brief on this issue. I noticed that, as I was looking at the packet, that tonight's staff is proposing a refund of surplus TIF funds from District One to the taxing bodies. I applaud the staff for doing that, and I assume the city council likewise will approve that. As you know, as a former educator, I'm very strongly supportive of public schools and have concerns with TIF districts. And I hope someday that all taxing bodies can recover their rightful property taxes, as they are entitled to receive them without TIF districts. And I think it's important for you to note that the IASB, the Illinois Association of School Boards Convention in November, discussed this very topic and passed a resolution, which I would like to read to you so you are aware of the position of school boards in the state of Illinois regarding the issue of TIF districts. Be resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support changes to the tax increment financing statute to include the following: A municipality cannot reset a TIF district which would extend the life of the TIF beyond 23 years. Thank you.
Okay, I have a slip from Martell Miller, not indicating subjects or when you wish to speak, so would you like to speak now? Okay.
I was going to say, this is the CPRB. I think they all come from the residents that stay in Urbana, because they're, they be overseers of what the police doing in Urbana. I don't think, once you move to Champaign, count how long you been on it, that concern may fall away, because you no longer stay in the residence. And then the CPRB, I'm looking at them having a say on the tasers, but they ain't got the tools to really investigate, because they got no subpoena power, until CPRB gets subpoena power to be able to investigate what goes on with the tasers and looking, stuff like that. It's kind of hard for them to make that judgment, that's how I look at that. And now, to come back with the tasers, I think it's been about 10 years, maybe a little less. I talked to the chief before, Conley, Mike Beasley, and he didn't really care for the tasers, but he wanted to work on more of community policing. And I feel the same. We need to work on more community policing, because we still got the racial profiling issue, which I've been working on over 10 years, and all the cities with all the police departments, you know, it's still happening. A taser do kill. Don't say it's... Tasers are safe weapon, because it have killed. It ain't like it's got a record for not doing bodily harm, or bring on death. And then when you think about who's using the tasers, you know, there's humans using the tasers. Humans make mistakes, because we got one, a five-year-old in Florida that's been tased by the police, you know? Five years old, you know? What rational mind tell you you need to tase a five-year-old? So we just, I think, with the tools we putting in their hand, you know, and the tools, they got enough tools on their tool belts. Instead of looking for more tools to hurt people, it's work on how we deal with people. And I wish the council look at that, you know? It's work on our police, how they deal with people. It's work on how our police force should look. It should have, be very diverse, you know? It ought to be diverse, like the city diversity. If your city 13%, your police department ought to be 13%. Your city workers ought to be 13%. Them things we can work on, and we can take this taser money and put towards some education for the community, some community forums where we have dialogue, what we expect out of police. And we all know who's going to get tased, you know? It be young African-American man be the one get tased. And if you ain't going to put nothing in there where a police be held accountable, I feel that if he's wrong for these tased, the city ought to be able to pay $5,000 for everybody get wrongfully tased, you know, without going through the court system. If we figure out right here that the police wasn't order, if you put something like that in order, where if they use the tasers wrong, it cost that amount of money, I guarantee they won't be tasing nobody for their First Amendment rights. You know, let's put something in place, you know, hold them accountable, make a cash value on it. And get five or six officers does that in three or four years, I guarantee that our chief be looking for a new job, you know, because if you can't stop them from tasering when they have any business tasering, y'all look at it different, you know? And that's how you have to look at these things today, and when you put them in society. People got to have accountability. And we, right now, we see the police haven't been unaccountability, from New York into Ferguson. Thank you.
I don't have any other slips of folks who want to speak prior to the subject matter, so if I'm wrong, please let me know. All right. All right, so we'll move on, and we had a motion that was approved to move Agenda Item Number Eight to the beginning of the Agenda of ordinances. So, is that correct? Yeah. All right. So Agenda Item Number Eight, An Ordinance Mending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3.7, Section 3.7-15, Increasing the Number of Licensed Premises That May Display Video Gambling Terminals. Okay.
Hi.
Go for it.
So, did everybody have a chance to read the memo? I hate to reread something that is just one sheet. All we basically want to do is, we currently allow 12 premises to have a license for video gambling terminals, and we would like to increase that to 20. We have one establishment that has already been approved for a license, or has a license from the Illinois Gaming Board, and they're waiting to have a license from the city. And we have one that's pending approval by the Illinois Gaming Board, and we feel like that the move from 12 to 20 is reasonable, and it's something that could be reevaluated if we end up getting to that amount. Any questions?
Eric?
I guess the question in my mind, and you're probably not the right person to put on the spot for this, but the question I have in my mind about this issue is, you know, there are concerns were raised about putting the machines in in the first place, and now we have some experience with those. And I wonder if we have any evidence, one way or the other, with respect to those concerns? I mean, the revenue is very, very welcome, of course, but I wonder if there's any evidence one way or the other about whether we have encouraged problem gambling, or, you know, or these machines have. I think our hope was that we weren't going to increase problem gambling, but that, or even cause it in any, in any way, facilitate it, but that we would be having revenue generated locally... locally that otherwise would be internet gambling or whatever. Do we have any feeling about how those issues have gone?
I'm not, you know, I'm not really sure. Staff did meet, and we discussed issues like that, and the type of clientele that would go to the establishments with the video gambling. A lot of the video gambling are in restaurants, so the primary reason they are going is to have dinner, to have drinks, and to perhaps throw a little bit of money in the machine. To my knowledge, we only have one establishment that is just basically just a gaming spot. Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, when we had the discussion about this, there were some communities that said they wouldn't put any limits on, and there were others that said they wouldn't have it at all. And so, we sort of struck a middle ground that we would limit the number. And Lou Lang is the legislator that introduced this, and it's been much more popular than even he anticipated. So we have a lot of requests, and these are businesses that seem to be serving a purpose for entertainment. I'm not really big on gambling by any means, but I think the question is, do you want these people to be doing this in Urbana, or do you want them to go to some other place? So, we haven't had any problems from any of the establishments, so there's, doesn't seem to be any reason to not raise it since there seems to be a huge demand to have more businesses.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
All right, well, I'm just gonna say that it seems to me that it falls into the same category pretty much as our increasing liquor licenses. It's kind of a case-by-case situation. I can't remember if we have a review of the establishment before we allow it. We don't have any names here of people who are applying for new licenses today, but we're just, what we're expecting to see the requests filled. So, let me ask that. Do we, I can't remember, does the city council review the, each applicant, like we do for a liquor license?
For a liquor license, you do.
We do, but we don't for--
In order to have a video gaming license, you have to have a liquor license.
Oh, you do, you have to?
Yep.
Okay, and they're connected, okay. So, and so for that reason, since they're similar and they seem to be operating well, I guess I would make a motion that we adopt this ordinance.
Second. Yeah, I just had one comment. There was an article I read not, well, a couple days ago, which indicated that riverboat gambling revenues have decreased in Illinois, so I suspect that the rise of video gambling is probably connected to that. So it may be that people are just staying closer to home for that form of entertainment.
Point of information.
Charlie?
The motion should be that this is a motion to send it to council with a recommendation for approval.
Thanks, it's a little sloppy on my part.
And forgetful on mine, but we all knew.
Kidding, we're in here too. Bill?
I guess my only question would be, the number seems kind of arbitrary. I mean, it says that there were five premises two years ago, so we've doubled in two years. And now, by raising it from 12 to 20, it could potentially quadruple in the next, you know, go from five to 20 in the next year. It seems like, I don't know what the rationale was for putting 12 on it, but I would guess maybe it was to give us time to see what the impact was. I just question whether we've had enough time from the change, from the fairly rapid increase in the gambling establishments to see what the impact is and make a fair determination whether we want to raise it or not.
I know there's a demand for it, and can do it however, you know, council wants to, but there's, like I mentioned before, there's two, but then I also know there's others that are waiting. They're currently doing, undergoing the application process with the Illinois Gaming Board. So, there's certainly a demand from the businesses to have the video gambling. I've spoken to a few of the business owners, and Bill Brown from the American Legion was kind of, he was the first one. It is Bill Brown, isn't it? No, it's not. What's his name? I don't know, anyway.
Some other guy.
Forget that. Go ahead and write that out. But, you know, it's something that kind of saved their local establishment, and they've been able to give back to the community. I believe they, you know, were able to buy all new uniforms for like youth baseball, things like that. So, you know, that's, it's, I'm sure there's positive things that happen with these funds, and I'm sure you would all agree, but, you know.
Charlie?
In that case, maybe 20 isn't high enough. Otherwise, we're gonna see this in six months again. I mean, you know. Mayor might have an answer to that.
Madam Mayor?
Well, you know, how do you pick the number? We picked 12 after hearing from businesses. And a lot of the communities that said they weren't gonna have it at all have changed their minds, others haven't. But I think we limit the liquor licenses so that we can make sure that we get good quality businesses, and of course, they have to go through a criminal background check. So, we have not found any problems from these businesses. So, we do adjust the liquor licenses periodically, and, you know, I don't know how long ago we originally passed this.
To September of 2012, I think.
2012?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, so it's only been two years, so. The American Legion did very well. They were one of the first in the state, if not the first in the state, the Urbana American Legion. So, I think if you want businesses and you want customers to be in Urbana, this would be a reasonable thing to do.
Okay, could I turn the chair over to Diane here for a second? All right.
Go ahead.
So, I guess my comments would be, I'm a bit conflicted about this. Being a conservative, being somewhat libertarian, actually, in terms of who ought to be able to do business and where and when, I should be for this. My concern is, and when this came up, it was prior to my tenure on the council, I thought that the original rationale for it, and I thought that the council at the time's rationale for it was very, very good. And it was in large part to support the local fraternal organizations. So, the further we go down this road of adding licenses and allowing additional licenses, I wonder if that original intent isn't gonna be negated. And what happens to the American Legion? What happens to the VFW and their ability to remain viable? So, that's, I think that's a legitimate concern. My other issue is, I'm not so sure that we, as a city, ought to be encouraging businesses that are storefronts just for gaming. There are, there are long-term businesses here in this town who have made the decision to augment their business with gaming machines under the, the understanding of the, of the city council's original intent, which was to support established local businesses for the most part. I don't know that, I don't know that you folks who were on the council at the time intended to, intended to entice folks to set up storefronts just for gaming. And that's what's happening. So, I'm at a real crossroads. I feel like, hey, if folks want to spend their paycheck that way, I guess we should, we should participate in that. Is, is, is kind of my, my, my base instinct. But, at the same time, there are local brick-and-mortar businesses who have invested heavily in this community and give back to this community, who took us at our, at our word that we were gonna limit this, and we were gonna keep this confined, and we were not gonna decide that in the long run, we're just about more licensure revenue and, and trying to make money off of this. So, I think there's a real value judgment that has to be made here. And I think we're at that point. Do we, do we increase the number of licenses now, or do we support the businesses who have, who have already embarked upon this? And more importantly, the fraternal organizations who are frankly living off of this and thriving off of this at this point, and giving back to the community. And I think dilution of the market, and let's not kid any, any, let's not be, let's not be under the illusion that there is an unlimited market here. The market is limited. It's defined. And the more venues that we allow for gambling, the more diluted that market becomes. And at some point in time, it's no longer a viable business option. And my fear is that it's not, it's no longer a viable business option for folks like the VFW and the American Legion who are, who are really counting on this.
Libby Tyler, Director of Community Development Services.
Thanks. I thought I should mention, since we started talking about locations where it's really just gaming and not a restaurant or a bar, that we are doing research in our planning division to identify this as a new land use in our zoning, and identify the locations where it might be permitted and under what requirements it should be permitted. And of course, as always, we look at what other municipalities are doing. And I'm sure other municipalities in Illinois are dealing with the same thing. And, you know, initially, these were all just accessory to restaurant or bar. And now we have one that isn't really proving that to be the case. And we're concerned that these uses be located properly and with, with these controls. But I think by allowing the new uses with the licenses, we still have the zoning that we can use to review. I don't know if that helps the deliberation, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we are, we are studying this, but we're right next to Champaign, which has never had a limit. So, even if we wanted to limit, that doesn't protect existing businesses in Urbana.
Well, that's a fair point. So, would you be willing to just repeal Urbana's ordinance right now so that we're equal with Champaign?
I think we have a limit on the liquor licenses, and that, I think that's for a good reason. So, I don't think this has worked badly. And I think the American Legion is doing very well and will continue to do very well.
Okay, I have an additional, I'm sorry. Eric?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just say something really wishy-washy. I, I, I take Mike's argument, although I don't think that the people who hang around the VFW or the Legion are likely to be drawn away elsewhere to use the slot machines, because I think, I think they love where they are. I think they love that environment. But, that being said, I, I do take seriously the point that after a while, they're gonna be diminishing returns, there'll be dilution. What that point is, I don't think we have an analysis of this to know what it is. I intend to support what's in front of us as expanding, but expanding, you know, reasonably conservatively. And so that it will essentially, having a limit essentially forces us to think about it again and again, and continually review whether this is really working out, whether we are gonna see, whether we are beginning to see any, you know, negative social consequences, whether we're beginning to see any dilution of the, in the market. So, I, I will support this kind of slow, you know, slow growth.
Okay. So, I do have another public input card that was submitted. So, I'll go ahead and call him up now. It's Ben, Ben Jocelyn.
Thank you. So, I didn't know this was gonna be on today, but I do have, I mean, I haven't seen a whole lot of information in my time about the effects of gambling, but I do know that it disproportionately tends to affect minority populations. I think that's something we should keep in mind as we continue to expand, the fact that we don't have solid numbers on whether or not it has affected problem gamblers and an increase in addictive gambling before moving forward is something that I find problematic. I think that those studies should occur and that we should have further work on those zoning ordinances and wait for that to come through before we decide to expand the number of establishments that we allow to have this type of gambling. And that we should have some hard numbers before we, we move forward. In terms of whether or not it affects Urbana versus Champaign, I think that it's the duty of this board to choose what's best policy for Urbana regardless of what policy that Urbana currently has moving forward. And we can use them as example to sort of see what they've got going on and how it's affected their populations. But, on face value, I think this is really bad legislation for our, for our town. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments or, all right. So, all those in favor of advancing, of the motion to advance ordinance, Agenda Item Number Eight, Ordnance 2015-01-004, to council for approval, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
No.
The ayes have it, and the motion is adopted.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
My name is Shee, my name is Chris.
What's your name?
Carl Curran.
On what issue?
Video gaming.
Well, I apologize. I apologize. I did have you misplaced. Would you like to go ahead and make comments?
If it would be okay.
Yeah, I think that's perfectly appropriate. This, this was my mistake.
Thank you very much. My name is Carl Curran. I am with Melody Music, Melody Gaming. I'm a coin operator here in Champaign-Urbana, and I am involved with video gaming. I want to commend the council. First of all, I think that it, what, two years ago when we sat here, we talked about controlling it, and I didn't really, wasn't really for that. With what I've seen go on throughout the state, I think that some types, some types of control are really, really a good idea. You, Mr. Madigan, hit on storefronts. I believe that, and Mr. Lang, I've had conversations with him, the intent of the bill was to give bars, restaurants, fraternal organizations, truck stops, a way to increase revenue and to maintain their current businesses and to increase their businesses. It was also to allow them to get more employees, allow them to do improvements, which then, of course, you know, brings everybody together in the communities that allow that money to stay in the communities. Of course, you guys, as Urbana, have seen the revenues grow. I currently, I had seven accounts here in town. We're back to six. The one across the street has closed. But there are two on the agenda right now that have already been licensed by the state of Illinois. And obviously, you've, you've, you've passed it to go ahead and, and to increase those numbers, not pass it, but to take it from committee to the board. And I commend that. I think that's a good idea to increase those numbers. I would, though, suggest that as your liquor licensing procedure, to make sure that someone who is applying for liquor license is a valid business. You know, that was the intent of the law. The intent of the law was to take these businesses, allow them to grow. I can tell you, many, many businesses have put new roofs on-- I can tell you many, many businesses have put new roofs on, have put new parking lots, have done, increased many, many employees because of the increased revenue that are currently in there. This is a entertainment value. It's a $2 bet. It's not something that goes out. We have no, no, across the state of Illinois, there's nothing that says that it's increased crime, that it is, has absolutely no increase in problem gambling as of yet. There's been nothing that has been, that is, across the state that has increased. Because we're involved with problem gambling. You know, that's one of the things as an operator, that we have to be involved with both sides of the coin. And so we've not seen all that. The thing that I really like about what Urbana's done is you guys are doing some controls. There are some nutty things going on out there. There are scuba shops with video gaming in them. Because some of the municipalities are just giving away licenses like candy. And so I really applaud you on that. So that being said, you know, I wanted to, you know, address the riverboats. The riverboats are down 25% in Illinois. The riverboats are down 25% in Indiana. So video gaming really has not had any impact. I think gambling itself has kind of gone with the recession and has had a big impact. But it's across the states. Iowa's the same way. And I also think that increasing this to a certain number, whatever it may be, so that you were able to keep an eye on some, because the two local establishments are one, are both restaurants that are already licensed by the state of Illinois. And they just need your approval in order to go forward. And I think that that's a positive note. So I commend you and I appreciate you allowing me to go ahead and speak even though I missed out and thank you for your time.
Well, at least you were on the right side of the issue according to the vote. And I do sincerely apologize for missing your card.
Well, thank you.
Is there anybody else I missed? Okay. All right, so we'll move on to.
Eleven.
Agenda item number 11. Ordinance number 2015-01-007, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement, first amended and restated with Cake Design Development LLC. All right, take it away.
Good evening. Brandon Boyes, Economic Development Manager. Back on May 5th, council approved a development agreement with Matt Cho, Cake Design Development, for the demolition and renovation of 204 West Main Street into an open air market, beer garden and event space. Unfortunately, as outlined in the structural engineers report, in the packet, the facade was found to be deficient and infeasible to repair as was originally planned. The current, the development agreement in its current state will not allow the developer to fully demolish and reconstruct the facade. But with this report, it's pretty much necessary at this point to, for a cost-effective development to proceed, that this amendment be included. It would allow for the new facade to be constructed and would also not change the amount of the incentive being offered, really only to change the circumstances or change the agreement to reflect the circumstances of the structural condition of the property.
Diane.
I move that we send ordinance number 2015-01-007, which is an ordinance approving redevelopment agreement, first amended and restated with Cake Design Development LLC for 204 West Main Street to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second. I have a comment.
It's been moved by Diane, seconded by Dennis. And Dennis?
Yeah. So I'm a little disappointed that we can't save the original facade. It looked like we could. I sometimes wonder if I would, I guess I have a tendency to want to disagree with these structural evaluations of the engineers. The building, it's always looked like they can stand up and we're losing a lot of buildings in the downtown right now. This facade apparently is going to come down. We're taking down 202 West Green Street too, by the library, for kind of similar reasons, structural issues. And it brings up two issues that I think the city council should really try to address more succinctly. One of them is we're finding, you know, demolition by neglect. Both these buildings had been pretty much abandoned for a number of years. And usually it's when the roof goes that the entire building is affected in a really bad way. And that's what happened with this facade. I'm really, you know, glad that the developer, Cake Design, is taking on the responsibility of taking over a building and putting it to a new use. Of course, it's gutting the building down completely ultimately, but it's taking a building that pretty much had failed and was not possible to use and habitate, and it's turning it into an important space because it is right downtown in our old district. So the second thing that I want to talk about and maybe related to this is, you know, we talked about four or five years ago about having what I would call a light design overlay district for the downtown or in the downtown area. And if that was in place today, it would help to assure me and actually to preserve the nature of the downtown, how the downtown looks, because we would have an opportunity to talk to the developer and to give them guidelines to consider in their, when they erect the new edifice that would be replacing the old one, so that it would be sensitive to the proportions and the nature of the buildings around it. What we want to avoid, in my opinion, is, you know, something so glaringly different and new that it sticks out like a sore thumb in the downtown. So I hope that we can work on design, a design review overlay district for the downtown and I'm really willing to bring a sketch of what that might look like to the council on some future date.
Anyone else? Diane.
Does our development agreement have any guidelines for what the facade? I know we had sketches and plans originally. Is he going to stick to those original plans as much as possible?
We don't have a design submittal at this time. It will be reviewed because it will require a building permit.
So we will see this, you'll see the sketch?
Yes, it will be reviewed by Building Safety and Community Development.
Diane, can you take the chair for me?
I'd be happy to.
So a couple of questions. One is, and I read the staff document on this, so the entire building now is basically going to be torn down. But there is no intention by Matt to maybe actually construct a building there now? Or is he still sticking with the same plan of like a beer garden behind a facade?
That will be the initial outcome, that we would hope to be fully in place by the spring or perhaps the early summer. However, the agreement does outline a potential phase three where the structure could be enclosed or a second story could be added. The developer described at one point that he had an interest in creating a second story access to 206 West Main, which is this collab. There actually is a second story there. It actually connects into 208, or rather 210, which is the second story of 208. 208 is Cafeteria and Company. 210 is where there are now two tech offices and an apartment. So currently, the way to access those tech offices is from the rear of the building. So in the future, this area could serve as a front door to those offices up above. But at this time, the developer didn't have the funds or wasn't willing to prioritize that portion of the development. But it could be added as a future phase and we did acknowledge that in the agreement, although it isn't required.
Now, just my only other question was, I mean, in my opinion, and I don't have any architectural experience whatsoever, but the facade seems very unremarkable to me today. So it's quite possible that he could bring a design that is very much more interesting than what is there now. Because it is really unremarkable. Am I not right?
Remarkably unremarkable.
Remarkably unremarkable. There we go. Okay. Yeah, all right. Okay, so there's a motion and a second to forward, ordinance number 2015-01-007 to the council with a recommendation of approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the motion is adopted. Thank you, sir. All right, so I guess we're going back to agenda item number five? Am I correct? Were there any other? All right. So ordinance number 2015-01-002, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance FY 2014, 2015, capital improvement donations for Arbor programs. Mr. Brown.
Okay. So we have developed, I think it was back in 1997, a tree growing guide that provided information to citizens and answered the common questions, most common questions that citizens had to municipal arborists. And that was called the Tree Growing Guide. That developed, became very popular. There was a Western Illinois version. It grew to a Northern Illinois version and then a Southern Illinois version. So we had four versions out there. We eventually combined those into what we call the Under the Canopy publication and we went color. So we found an artist to draw mostly Urbana trees that we provided on the back as a poster. And it's really popular with children and adults, but the purpose of it is to recommend new varieties of trees to residents for their yards and how to plant and how to care for trees around one's home. Well, the first version, we're just about out of print. So we're ready to go for revision. And I have partners that I've acquired to pay for the revisions and that's what that's all about. It's the University of Illinois, it's the Illinois Arborist Association, and it's the Illinois Forestry Development Council, which would be through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. So they will fund this revision and then we'll have our copies for Urbana and we'll disseminate copies to them and throughout the state.
All right. Charlie?
Since this is revenue neutral, I'm all for it. I'll move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? Bill?
I just would say thanks a lot for providing that. I know you gave me a packet full a couple of months ago and I gave some to constituents and it's a really nice brochure. And I was impressed with how well, the quality level of the brochure. And I'm even happier to hear that it's not going to cost us any net money and that we get reimbursed from your partners that you found. So I'm all for it. Thanks.
Any other comments?
I have a question.
Diane.
Is there an online version of this?
No, not yet, but we'll have some of the information on our new webpage that we're working on.
An Under the Canopy webpage?
I'm sorry, I had the mic off. We'll have some, a webpage for the Arbor Division or Public Works. So we'll have some of this information on a web, on web information that we're working on presently.
All right. Seeing no further comments or debate, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the motion is adopted. All right, agenda item number six, ordinance number 2015-01-003, an ordinance authorizing the Urbana Police Department to purchase tasers and for civilian police review board oversight over deployment and use of tasers. The taser ordinance.
I'm going to make this very short. As my memo indicated, this has been a process that has been taking place for almost a year. A lot of people put a great deal of thought and time, both into the policy and the oversight process. And I think that all the information that I could have shared with you has been presented to provide support for that process. I do want to say that before we get into questions, though, I need to recognize the civilian police review board members Scott Dossett and Ricardo Diaz because they were incredibly helpful and we spent a great deal of time with them carrying information back and forth from other citizens in the community who had input. And they provided a great deal of input into both that process of the policy as well as the oversight. I also need to recognize the legal staff here in Todd Rent because both of them, as well as Rich Searls, Lieutenant Rich Searls from the Police Department, who also spent a great deal of time providing all the information and gathering all the information for that process. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Eric.
So I guess I'll ask the question that, you know, I was going to ask before. Are the guidelines that were written by the civilian police review board or by Ricardo and Scott, are those, will those actually be in place as UPD policy?
Yes, they will. That's the policy that was on, has been posted on the civilian police review board site for several months.
Okay.
I guess to follow up on that, as a department policy, then if there were changes to be made in that in the future, would that come back to council typically or would that just be something you'd do? If there were changes in the taser use policy?
Typically, the policies are maintained by each department. I haven't given that much thought, to be honest with you.
Okay. And then I guess the other question I had about the ordinance is, there must be, there must be legal reasons or privacy reasons for doing this, but for grouping the review of the taser incidents in groups of five or groups and not looking at them individually, I imagine it will be hard for the CPRB people to do it in some ways because you're reviewing individual uses, but you can't consider a change in policy on an individual basis. If I understand it right, you're supposed to look at it in aggregate and say, do we need to change our policy without actually bringing up a particular use? So I was wondering if either you or legal staff could explain the reasoning or, yeah, the reason why that has to be, if it has to be.
Mr. Simon.
I'll apologize in advance and I'll cough my way through this. The rationale for reviewing groups of incident reports is so there's no general propensity of trying to evaluate a single officer's conduct. The way the ordinance is drafted, it's, it gives the CPRB the opportunity to review a group of incident reports that in some way involve the use or deployment or display, whatever label you want to give, of tasers as a group. Because hopefully, their review will point out if in fact, this is the case, where maybe the policy and the practice are not working as originally intended. Clearly, the CPRB cannot discipline or take any action against a particular officer that would violate the police union contract. So they can't do that. The other is, there will be situations, and that's why some of these reports will not be reviewed, where there may be legal action, whether it's criminal action, maybe against the officer or against a suspect or subject, or civil action brought against the city that arises out of the use of taser. Where the use of a taser in one way or another is a key feature of the litigation. And the problem is, is we will have an internal review, we will have CPRB review, and the goal is not to create evidence or in any way influence a civil or a criminal proceeding. And that is individual based. It'll be, you know, either the subject or the officer or the city itself. So that is the other reason for reviewing these in the aggregate, i.e., it's not the goal of the city to create a treasure trove of evidence, but rather to review whether the policy and the practices on the use of tasers are as contemplated and effective.
Diane.
I think Bill had a follow.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill. Bill?
Just, other people may want to come back to that, but just while I'm thinking of it, for, on the policy part, where they fill out the taser form and the information that's requested on that, it lists race, sex, age, and a lot of other stuff, but it doesn't list height or weight anywhere. I'd ask that we could add height and weight to that form?
And that was a great deal of debate. Mr. Dossett, I believe, suggested the same thing, but don't forget that information is also going to be provided on the police report itself. We can certainly add that if you want, we just didn't want to be too redundant because there's also going to be a police report that's available for tracking purposes.
Okay. I guess if access to both of those forms would be equal to the public, it might not matter, but if this one's going to be more accessible either by FOIA or during the review process, I think I'd want to make sure that that was publicly available.
Mr. Brown, did you also want me to address the issue, or I don't know how you want to do this?
Go for it.
With respect to the question you posed a little earlier about the ACLU's belief that you shouldn't have to be tased?
Sure, and I'd add a couple of other conditions that concern me besides that, besides ACLU's concerns, and I'm not sure if I got them exactly right, but one would be that if you really do believe that it could be fatal, it seems kind of odd that we would be requiring someone to do that. The other being that since this will be, since this will be voluntary, people won't have to carry, they won't be forced to carry tasers, but if they want to carry the taser, they would have to go through the experience. I'm worried that there could be some self-selection going on where people who might be more willing to experience tasers would be the ones to get tasers, and the one that may respect them more as the weapon that I think they are may be less likely to, to, to get the taser and then not be available when it's needed.
Well, I guess initially I will, I'll comment that we have 55 police officers currently on the department. We all carry pepper spray. Pepper spray, when it was originally introduced, there were the same concerns, and yet we found it really important as part of the training process that each officer experienced that, not only because, I think a little earlier you suggested or expressed some concern that maybe a taser would impact an individual slightly differently or possibly much different than that of the officer, so the officer shouldn't use that, his response, his or her experience with the taser, as though it was going to be similar to the person they were tasing. Did I, I don't know if I articulated that well, but it's important that we understand it's not only, oftentimes when we go through training, annual training, I was pepper sprayed, I was tasered, I was handcuffed, I was taken down by a variety of different pressure, counterpressure, control tactics, and we teach our officers and have them exposed to those types of situations. Now needless to say, we're not going to strike someone with a baton for the obvious reasons or shoot someone, but as much as possible, we have to not only teach the officers that the ability to be able to fight through it, but also recognize the potential dangers involved. For instance, when I was tased, I was completely and totally incapacitated, to the point where someone could have walked up and taken my firearm out of my holster, and I could have done nothing to prevent them from doing that. We need to expose police officers to that type of situation so that they're aware of it prior to going into a position and recognizing just how serious it is. With respect to tasers killing people, I wouldn't have got tased, nor would I recommend that our officers get tased if I had any concern whatsoever that tasers were going to kill people. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I understand. I think it's a remote chance, and very remote chance, but it concerns me that there are unexplained cases, so.
Diane?
I had a couple of questions and a couple of comments. The first question is regarding individual consideration of cases, if there is a formal complaint filed with CPRB regarding, related to a tasing experience, then that is something that's considered on an individual basis, correct?
Correct. Through the CPRB.
Through the CPRB, okay. As far as the ordinance goes, I am going to offer a, an amendment to section 19.48, which is the third page of Exhibit A, Reports to Mayor and City Council, and I would, I would like that to be reworded to say, "The human relations officer shall provide the mayor and city council with a copy of the CPRB report and recommendations, as well as a copy of the police chief's written review and comments on such report." Right now, it leaves the option apparently open to the CPRB, and I think we definitely shall, should receive a copy.
Okay.
And then I had communicated with both legal staff and the chief today regarding making the wording and definitions consistent between the internal departmental policy and the, and the ordinance, so that, so that the language was consistent in terms of what we're actually saying we're going to do. So, so there are two parts of the internal policy that I have a change to recommend to. One is 309.63, which I would add language, "The chief of police or is designated shall report all displays," I would add that, "as well as deployments," to the CPRB. Right now, it reads just deployments or discharges, and that's different from what the actual ordinance specifies. And then 309.81, CPRB taser deployment review, basically the same thing, all tasered displays and deployments would be reported. And that, that makes the internal policy consistent with what our actual ordinance that we are considering here. And then my last question is, I've had several people ask about body cams and where we are with issuing them to officers and if we're close to having body cams issued to officers who, who, well, to all officers, but particularly those wearing tasers.
Well, we currently have in-car cameras for our squad cars, and that video is all, is, is up and running and has been running for a number of years. Each of the tasers will have a camera affixed to them as well.
Right.
So that when the taser is deployed. With respect to body cams, I think we're, we're still, first of all, they're very expensive.
How much do they cost?
Well, the camera itself is, I mean, you can, I've gone to several different demonstrations. Some of them are $300, some of them are $900, some of them are $1,200, but the camera itself is the cheap part. The expensive part is the storage and the backend stuff. Now, I know last week Sanford Hess mentioned that the computers that we have here at the city are capable of handling sufficient storage for video work at this point, but I don't think we're even remotely close to understanding how much video that's going to be. And I'm only going to give you, I mean, I'll give a purely hypothetical example. We go to the scene of a bank, of an armed robbery, and there are five police officers there, and there's physical use to take the person into custody. Those five cameras affixed to those officers will all need to be downloaded, all of that needs to be retained as evidence. More importantly, and most importantly, it all then has to be processed for the purpose of getting it prepared for the state's attorney's office, getting it prepared for any FOIA requests that may have, may be filed on it, and it's an exorbitant amount of work. Now, there are some solutions out there that are going to help reduce this, they're just not quite ready yet with body cams. As an example, our squad cars, as you park Northside, actually wirelessly download the data from the car to the server downstairs in IT, and I don't know, I'm not an IT expert, so I'm not going to use some of the correct language here. The sheriff's office, for instance, just went to body cameras. A number of people said, well, the sheriff's office has them, why don't you? We have to remember that we're, the sheriffs work, their, their office is their squad car. They go on duty from their home at the time that they start their tour of duty, that camera is affixed to them. Each of them goes then to the Champaign County Sheriff's Office at the end of the night for the purpose of processing paperwork and not, and whatnot. So they have well over an hour every evening where they're assigned to go there. So their, their cameras are actually cradled, they're taken off their chest or their lapel and put on, into a cradle where it's then downloaded for an hour and a half or two hours, basically, for the purpose of downloading it at the end of the evening to download that data. Our police department, we share police cars, it would be an overwhelming task unless each of us had our own body camera and the cradles that are affixed to it. It would be very difficult, and because of the times involved, it would be very difficult for officers to be able to just bring their equipment in and download it at the end of the evening because they, they will then need it for the purpose of writing reports and other issues. So it's a, it's a logistical difficulty that I think the solution is very simple with a wireless download. Unfortunately, there are, the Panasonic Arbitrator, which is the most recent company that came and spoke with us, actually says that solution may be available this August or September. However, it's not yet tested, and I really just don't want to dive into a potentially $200,000 investment when it's not yet, the problems haven't been worked out. So I would, I would, I would just love to let others try to evaluate what we have and then move forward from there. I am 100% in favor of body cameras. I wish we could have them today. I just don't think, quite frankly, that the technology is at a point where we're able to function with it without an enormous amount of backend work.
Okay. I have one more.
Great, Diane?
One last question. As far as the, the reports, the incident reports and all the data that is given to CPRB, of all that, what is accessible by the public? I mean, is the audio and video that the CPRB sees accessible to the public? Is that considered part of the open meeting?
FOIA?
Record? It's FOIA.
Well, it's, it's certainly FOI-able with the exercise of the, whatever exemptions in FOIA might be available. I mean, if, for instance, if the incident may involve a, you know, a healthcare issue, a mental health issue, there may be some privacy rights that need to be protected in connection with that, but conceptually, any record of the city is FOI-able with the recognition that there are exemptions that can, you know, for redaction that can apply.
Okay.
Dennis?
Okay, so we're getting some really good points here about some of the details. One of the things, Officer Conley, that, or Chief Conley, that I didn't really see very well detailed was the training, the aspect of what kind of training these people are going to go through. It talks about training, but it doesn't tell us what training, how many weeks or days, how many hours, over a period of what time. Can you, before we approve any ordinance like that, I'd really want to know exactly what, how they're going to be trained and what the expectations are in that area.
Certainly. We, I actually, Rich Searls went to St. Louis for the purpose of attending the Train the Trainer course and came back with the best practices for how we're going to train, and again, I need to clarify that the people that are going to be carrying the tasers are already, have had advanced training because they are all crisis intervention team officers, so that means they had an additional minimum of 40 hours of training specifically dealing with mental health related.
And that's a requirement?
It is. It's a requirement in the policy that says only CIT officers will carry the taser. In addition to that, when Rich, and I should say, Rich would be here tonight, unfortunately, he had, he lost a fight with a ladder during the holiday season, and he's been down and out for the count for a number of weeks, or maybe, but Rich fully intended on being here, he will be the trainer when, when he recovers. And that's not only for the six officers that are going to be receiving the advanced training, and Mr. Roberts, I, I don't know if it's an eight-hour or a 12-hour block of instruction. I can't, I don't want to say with absolute certainty, but it's a minimum of an eight-hour block of instruction for each of those people. But in addition to that, all of the police officers, just like with excited delirium and some other advanced tactics, all of the officers that go through annual training for the police department will go through a block of instruction on how we'll deploy the other officers because the taser deployment itself is only a part of it. You still need to make sure that the person doesn't injure himself, that they get transported appropriately and secured appropriately, so the entire police department is going to go through that training as well.
And would it be possible for members of the council to, I mean, is there a booklet that comes with this training that we could peruse?
Absolutely.
Or a video or some, you know, whatever equipment it is that is used in the training and document without necessarily going through the eight hours of training?
Sure.
It would be really great to be able to see the details of it.
Certainly. I can, I can.
I really appreciate that a lot.
Absolutely.
Charlie?
Yeah. Chief, since we're talking about the, the actual policy, the section 309, 5.2, special deployment considerations, in the, in the introductory paragraph, it says, "Officers are prohibited from using a taser on any handcuffed subject or suspect unless the behavior is so egregious that a higher level of force would be justified." Could we add something like, "And other methods are not appropriate?" You know, you don't talk, you know, you know, pepper spray, something else, intermediate before applying the taser, or is that, or is that already clear from the way this is worded?
I think it's assumed that we, that the amount of force that you use has to be reasonable, and it has to be dictated by the officer at the time. And a perfect example for that was the person who pulls a knife from his waistband, and now, although handcuffed, is still capable of harming somebody, pepper spray may be the appropriate response, a NASP may be an appropriate response, or a taser may be an appropriate response. And I think, I'll be happy to add it, but I think the assumption is that the officer is going to have to evaluate the tools that are available to him and use the most appropriate tool.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you that language.
Okay.
You can go with it. More, more important in this section, you talk later on about excited delirium protocol in the report writing, but there's no mention here in this section about the excited delirium protocol. So, you know, a person who's clearly demonstrating excited delirium protocol could be tasered, then?
Oh, absolutely.
And, but what's, but there is a protocol that will be, would be followed. Could you describe that a little bit?
Well, there's a whole nother, there's a whole nother training section that, that each officer goes through that addresses the protocol for how do you respond to an excited delirium event? So, I mean, it's not in this section, it's in another policy. There, we have to remember, there are like 163 policies that are currently in the police department's directives manual.
But that, but that is something that is part of the training.
It is, absolutely. Annual, as a matter of fact.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Eric?
So I have maybe three questions. One is, to the best of your knowledge, have any volunteers, have any people who have been tasered on a volunteer basis been either killed or seriously injured?
None that I'm aware of.
I'm wondering about this group of, these clusters of five because I thought, I guess in our early discussions, we actually only anticipated the likelihood of maybe two or three taser events in a year.
Mm-hmm.
Is, would that still be your estimate based on, for example, the frequency of taser use by the sheriff's department would, you know, maybe give you a benchmark?
Right. Actually, ours is going to be more restrictive than the sheriff's office, and the answer is yes, it would be. However, Mr. Simon, after we've talked about this in some detail for the purpose of protecting the city, his recommendation was to cluster them, but we also were including displays as well as deployments. So in, if, for instance, an officer depo, excuse me, displays it, meaning removes it from his or her holster for the purpose of using it, and then gets voluntary compliance, in the past, we were just going to give a list of those. It's now recommended by City Legal that we present that package to you, to the CPRB for review in that cluster, so that will increase the numbers.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, compared to other municipalities or jurisdictions that have tasers, how does the, how does the policy that you've agreed to, the guidelines, how, how does this compare with other jurisdictions in terms of how restrictive it is?
Well, I wish Mr. Diaz were still here, but they had an opportunity, both Mr. Dossett and Mr. Diaz had an opportunity. We polled 11 different policies, taser policies from throughout the state. Lieutenant Searls probably gathered 10 more from across the country, bar none, we are the most restrictive.
Yeah, I, I guess I'll just add for this audience that I did a lot of literature search on this myself, and I couldn't find any other policies that were as restrictive. on this myself, and I couldn't find any other policies that were as restrictive as what you're proposing, any other policies that adhered so closely to the ACLU guidelines.
Any further comments? Dennis? Yeah, one more thing I thought about. So we're going to be collecting, we're going to be collecting the events and the displays, and when we have five, we'll be able to review them. But because so many of the events are going to be triggered by what's probably going to be court cases ultimately, because we're having, I mean, one of the reasons why tasers are being used is it's an alternative to using a firearm and to get compliance, and in many cases, we're going to be looking at experiences which may be related to crime, misdemeanor possibly even, but still, that's going to, I mean, I don't know, to what level, it's going to, it's going to take a while, I think, before these five cases will clear the benchmark of either criminal or civil possible review. So are we talking now only about people who resist jaywalking or people who have drunken behavior? No, maybe that's even going to be in a court case. I mean, I think we're, I think the city is most interested in starting to review these cases significantly early so we get a benchmark on, so we have an understanding about compliance, you know, protocol, procedure, and success. And I think that probably 85%, I might be wrong, of the, of the, of the displays and the uses are going to be related to events that we can't evaluate until months or perhaps a year or so later. How can we get faster review? Isn't it possible, I mean, I guess maybe for legal, I'm concerned that, that this caveat about not being able to review something is going to have quite a dampening effect for getting information.
Okay. Well, I, two responses. First, if we ever tase somebody for jaywalking, please, and I'm on record on television.
And thank you.
I assure you, the taser program would be over. So, that, and we would have some much more serious issues to deal with. Secondly, as the civilian police review board is set up as it stands right now, it would be no different than the process for a civilian police review board timing issue. When there is a pending criminal case, the civilian police review board temporarily postpones the evaluation of that program, of that particular event until the criminal case has been resolved. So that's no different between this process and that process. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Simon.
The ordinance, as drafted, would not include taser incidents which are involved in criminal proceeding or civil proceeding, where the use of the taser itself is the subject. For instance, if somebody, if a taser is used, you know, in connection with stopping a crime or after a crime has been committed in apprehension, but the use of the taser itself, other than like any other tool, is not the issue in the criminal proceeding or the civil proceeding, then that would be included. It's where either the subject of the taser, somebody else is, brings the issue, brings a civil suit claiming excessive use of force by using the taser, or where the officer is the one who's subject to a criminal proceeding for improperly or excessively using a taser. Then those reports would not be included. If somebody, let's say, commits a battery, and the officer comes upon the perpetrator, and he or she needs to stop that person, but the use of the taser is not an issue in either the criminal proceeding or any civil proceeding, then, then there would be an inclusion of those reports.
Okay, well, that's comforting to know because then we're going to have more information right away. And then I just want to make maybe a comment about, the members of the city council participated in an exercise that was guided by the police department in which we actually were shown videos and were given a gun and a pepper spray, and we were asked to respond, you know, to the videos as we were watching them, what to do next. You know, either try to control an activity that we saw in the, in the simulation on the screen with voice or with more forceful activity. And I didn't enjoy that at all, I will tell you right now, but I did see one of the, one of the episodes, and of course, these were being monitored so that if, if we made a response, then it would kick in a different aspect of the program.
Correct.
So it was very interactive.
Right.
You know, depending on what you said, then the perpetrator on the screen would then say something different or continue to do something. And I probably would have let poor fellow get beat to death before I, you know, took my action appropriately, and some other people were shooting, and some other people were using pepper spray. But I can see that the police, having experienced this training, have a need for some intermediate material, a tool, that's a little bit stronger than pepper spray, but you don't want to shoot anybody either because you're going to talk about like a fatal shot, pretty much. So I'm willing to really consider this, the acceptance of tasers, under the constraints that we're talking about, which I think at least are the most conservative I've heard of. Just going through that training, it made me realize that there's some issue, there's some real issues that you just don't know quite what to do with, and if you have, if you have something that goes halfway, it's a much better result. But I appreciate all the information that we're talking about here. And, you know, to be the most thoughtful, most limiting kind of aspect, and then have really strong review is going to be so important for this community to acknowledge or accept the need to intervene to save perhaps a life, but also to do it in the most thoughtful way and with the most trained officers. So I'm somewhat encouraged, actually, by this dialogue, and I appreciate the concerns of the community. But I also think that nobody will ever really know how to stand in the boots of an officer in a situation when you're responding immediately to a situation that keeps changing as you watch it. And luckily, I only had to do it through a simulation. Any further comments? Okay, we'll go to the public portion. Thank you, Chief. So my first public input card is Ivan Ruiz.
I'm not speaking, but I put you down as opposing.
Oh, I'm sorry. You do not choose to address, he's correct.
But I did put that down, sorry.
Nope, you, no need to apologize, that's my mistake, once again. So Ivan Ruiz, in opposition, does not wish, wish to testify. Beldon Fields wishes to address the committee on this issue.
Beldon Fields, 206 West Pennsylvania, in Urbana. First of all, I would like to say that I think that members of the civilian review board should be living in Urbana. I have the utmost respect for Janice Mitchell, but I do think it should be people in Urbana. I'm, I'm very troubled. I read over the documents that I could get on the computer in regard to the safeguards that we're talking about, and I'm particularly troubled with the role of the civilian review board. I had indicated before, after Scott Dossett had spoken before, that I thought it was inappropriate that members of the civilian board do that because they were, after all, supposed to be, I thought, an adjudicative body. That is to say that they would hear police complaints. Now, I don't know how busy they've been, but as of 2012, late 2012, when I looked at complaints, they had only had one complaint. I don't know if they've been busier after that. But I think that there is a cruel irony in the fact that the people who fought so hard for Urbana to get a civilian review board and that saw it as an adjudicative body that citizens could go to if they felt that they were offended, has in fact now been turned into a policy organism which has developed these rules for the use of tasers. And then as I read through it and I saw that the name of the officers were going to be redacted here, well, maybe that would make sense if they are not an adjudicative body, but of course, we know that Geckis versus Williamson, and the Illinois Attorney General has ruled that if someone does make a complaint, then the officer's name cannot be redacted. That's public information because the officer is performing a public function. So this kind of mixture.
You have one minute, Mr. Phil.
Of how these are being used, I think, is extremely, how shall I say? I think it casts into doubt the procedures that were used seriously. The second thing is, let's not work in La La Land. As soon as Urbana adopts this, Champaign's going to go for it. I mean, that was evident with the director, Mike, the director of the Police Training Institute, coming here and arguing for it. They want a uniform throughout Champaign-Urbana. They want tasers to be available. And the Champaign Department, which is a much more aggressive department and has a much poorer record, in my view, and I've looked very deeply into it, of violence against citizens, is going to get this too. The council won't even consider having a civilian review board there. But we who live in Urbana are also in Champaign. We're constantly in Champaign and Urbana. So here, we're scrupulously making these rules that aren't going to apply. So actually, if you adopt this, you're adopting it for Champaign and Urbana, because right after we get it, because we're the liberal ones, right? They always say that when we go to, on council, we don't have to follow you. You're the liberal city. We're not that way. We're going to have to live with it, and you're not going to be able to take them away once you give them to them. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for taking community input again on this topic, and I hope we do get our full five minutes like everybody else has.
You're getting three.
Can you tell me, before I say anything, can I ask why it's three and not five? Because other people were allowed to speak, and we get to this issue, is the city council saying the public cannot have their five minutes now? I thought I could have talked, if that's the rules, you're going to sit for the public tonight on this very important topic. If you're not going to give us the same amount of time you've given people prior, you moved the agenda items, you adjusted it, we sat here now for two hours, you've taken two minutes off of our comment time, you allowed other people to speak on and on earlier in the meetings, so it's later.
Would you like an answer?
So I would just like to know, will the public get their five minutes tonight to speak on this topic or not?
Well, Dural, what I would say to you is, the reason we adjusted the agenda was to actually save the taxpayers of Urbana some overtime costs.
I understand.
From employees. We could let some employees go if we dispensed with some less controversial issues first. So I'm sorry if we.
No, that's great, I understand.
I'm sorry if we, you know, burdened you a little bit on that, but we were just trying to make the best decision as we could, as, as the folks who.
I have no quarrel with that. If we get our five minutes.
Okay, well, I thought I was getting some concern from you about that.
Well, I was just asking why, because to put it later, and I thought because it's later, now you're going to reduce the public comment time.
Well, it's not about later, it's about the number of, it's about the number of folks who are speaking. Okay. So let's go back through and count them, and I'm deferring to the clerk here at this point in time, and she has limited the debate to three minutes by council rule because of the sheer number of folks speaking, which is the rule. But if you have something that is, that is important and not redundant, as you often do, you'll be given more time. I don't think anyone up here on the council has ever refused to give additional time. So I'm frankly not really understanding your argument before you even speak about how much time you get, because we've always been very accommodating of, of what you have to offer.
Okay, I just needed a clarification.
I just thought it was a little bit adversarial, honestly. I mean, we're always friendly to you, and you always have a lot of good things to say.
Okay, let me say, I was in it.
Everybody calm down, or we'll clear the room.
Let me.
How's that?
Yeah, let me just say, I'm not trying to be adversarial.
Okay. Nobody gets denied here. Nobody gets denied.
This is why these big minds, the time for water, because I don't want to sit up there and be shut up in five minutes.
You know what?
I have lots to say, sir.
And how many times has he been denied up here? None. I mean, none.
You are denying it. You say it's not five, it's three, you're denying it.
What I just, look, we have a council rule, and we often, we often amend that rule and give additional time. We don't, we don't cut people short.
How about you care for five? If they only want three, they just came three.
You know what? We're not going to, we're not going to go down this road. Dural, I would love to hear what you have to say.
Okay.
So would you like to go ahead?
Let me go ahead and make those comments, and if you feel you can grant me a couple more minutes if needed, I would appreciate it.
And.
And we'll hopefully, I would hope in the future, on such topics, though, we can make some accommodations ahead of time so the public is at least aware of it. I think it was just trying to understand the dynamic that changed, is all. Okay. I think what I don't understand is that on the agenda tonight, there were two topics that basically you were dealing with. One of them was, was the ordinance regarding the CPRB. I didn't know you were talking about the use of force policy, even though you were doing that tonight. The chief had alluded to that that policy was put on the website for public input for several months. My question to the chief is, were any of those public comments and corporate concerns incorporated into any changes in that use of force policy? Or is that just a perfunctory sort of thing that's done to appear that public input is valued? And we haven't seen the final draft, so how can we assess and respond to that to you in terms of appropriate feedback and input? The other thing I'd like to say is that I understand the tremendous work and efforts that the chief, the CPR, citizen police review, civilian police review board and the council has put into this issue on tasers. But when it comes down to it, and to me, this is the crux of the whole issue, regardless of how restrictive your policy is, regardless of the intensity of the training, regardless of those issues and planning that you've put in place, what actually is crucial to the people in the community that are pleased is what happens in those individual incidents where the officer has discretion to make decisions. And in spite of the best of training, in spite of the best use of force policy, there are opportunities and examples of abuse and misabuse of tasers that occur in policing situations.
You have one minute, Mr. Cruz.
I think for the community's concerns to address those, I think in terms of building trust in community relationships with the minority community and other people in the community, that the key component is the accountability and transparency aspect to determine what actually has occurred. The incident reports, the little video on a taser camera are not going to provide diddly squat in terms of assessing the totality of circumstances that occur in a situation. So I would take exception with the chief when he says he would like to get body cameras, but he can't afford it. I would suggest to you, the community wants body cameras and is willing to pay for them because they should be in place first.
Move to one minute.
Before tasers are used. Can I have another minute or two?
Two minutes. Motion for two minutes?
Two minutes.
Because what, what body cameras will do that tasers cannot do, because they're only activated when they're in use and you only see it, what body cameras will do that car cameras can't do is when officers are out of the car in situations, apartments in the street where the cameras aren't in focus, is provide the totality of circumstances that exist. And if the police department wants to build community trust, transparency and accountability, and the community wants to trust them, and I'm talking about all segments of the community, I'm talking about the African-American community, the issue of racial disparities in traffic stops, body cameras provide an excellent opportunity to. to look and resolve and address these situations in a productive and positive and constructive manner. I would suggest to you, we are not in a crisis mode to purchase tasers, okay? There's not a crisis out here. I'd say what we need to do first is make sure we have all of the appropriate things that address your concerns, the police department's concerns, and the community's concerns in place before tasers are purchased, and body cameras can address and resolve many of those concerns and issues of the community. And to do it two or three years later and have tasers, to me, it ought to be reversed. And you will, in the long run, I think, have a better, better serve the community and the UPD as a result, if you reverse that order. Thank you.
Next up is Ben Jocelyn.
Logan, Dural brought up most of the points that I was hoping to, just in terms of timeliness. The order of purchasing and the priorities of communication between board, police department, and community, and how the costliness of body cameras is, is seen to be prohibitive, whereas cost of tasers, I think those resources should be put towards cameras and towards communication between bodies first. And also, when the, I'm curious whether or not the option to call other police officers was an option given to you in situations in that video game simulation where you only had pepper spray and a gun? That's a question that I had, and was that an option given to, was call for backup an option in that
The response is dependent upon our, our interactions, and so, because I didn't call personally for a second officer to come up, because really, in a way, that wasn't the scenario that we were presented, I have no idea. But I'm sure, because there were numerous ways this scenario could have gone, I mean, I, very possibly. And of course, we know it was a simulation mainly to, to make the city council members aware of the training that officers also were given. So it's not really a conversation that I can answer.
I was just wondering if it was an option given to you along with pepper spray and a firearm, because it seems that calling for additional support would be a very logical sort of option that is not included on other sort of weaponized options that you have, and seems to be a, a option that would very likely affect the situation. And it seems that that, that video training was not only a sort of attempt to show you the situations that exist, but also sort of an emotionalized experience that would be persuasive in ways towards-
You have one minute.
Thank you. Towards the need for tasers. And there's not an extensive number of video clips in that scenario where you see situations that are resolved peaceably and through other, through other means. The idea that we're going to be spending eight hours per officer on sort of training, that we're buying the weapons, you are doing that same video research for what you said you're hoping for, two or three incidents a year, seems like a whole lot of money for incidents that are very rare, and that we could be spending that training doing things that are much more productive in terms of resolving many ongoing issues between the community and the police department. Thank you.
I just said I was putting my-
Okay. Also, Daniel Lewart is in opposition to tasers, does not wish to speak. Miriam Larson is in opposition to tasers, does not wish to speak.
Aaron Ammons.
Good evening, council, all those who are watching. So my first comments are that certainly there's a voice missing from this discussion tonight on the council, who I believe would be bringing forth some very important comments or questions that should be considered. And since this particular meeting is the meeting to vote to decide whether or not to send it to council, I think the absence of that voice from the predominantly African-American community, which based upon the statistics and stuff, really requires that the council do, it's due diligence, if you will, and considering that there is a vacancy and a void there. And although I'm able to speak to some of those, I only have three to five minutes. However, if I were sitting in that seat, then I could take my time the way you take your time to ask questions and get the answers that you feel like that you need. So I just want to take my few moments here to point out that I believe that the point that Mr. Brown raised about who will ultimately take control of the use of force policy or the taser policy means that it goes back into the hands of the police to do just that. I think that raises some real concern. There's so many different things that were raised here tonight, that I believe that questions from council, questions from the audience, when the chief himself says, hey, I haven't even really thought about that particular aspect of it. I think that since we're such a deliberative body here in the city of Urbana, then why would we rush this? The community and we, especially those in the activist community, have been waiting for just specific, whether it's town hall meetings, task force, or whatever, because this is obviously a very, very sensitive topic for, for our community, especially in the city of Urbana. So given that, I don't see-
You have one minute, Mr. Ammons.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. For us to move in such a fashion at this particular point, again, reiterating that, of course, Ms. Ammons is not here tonight. One of the questions that I had is, especially with the CPRB being the, part of the oversight aspect of it, I was going to ask, what percentage of the cases brought to the CPRB have been ruled against the police, that the CPRB found that the police officers misbehaved or did not do something appropriately? I think that's a relevant question. The number of hours of training specifically in dealing with tasers and its impact is something that's important. And I don't think we heard a specific number of hours of how that training would take place. And to the points that Councilman Jacobson, that you raised, that about if there were any deaths or, can I motion for a couple of minutes?
Sure, motion.
Thank you very much.
Two minutes.
That were there any deaths from volunteers? Well, all of the information that I've researched and things that I've looked at, the videos always showed a very controlled environment. There may be padding around in the room. There are people there ready to catch you. And as soon as the person who's being tased signals or commands to stop, the electric shock is stopped immediately. So one of the questions that I think should be clarified is, how long is the duration of a tase for any particular individual? Can the police stop it at any given time? You know, some, just some things like that, that I think should be just absolutely crystal clear to the public, just taking the time to do that. What is wrong with us having a town hall meeting, where the police come and the citizens come and the council members are there, and we actually just sit down and, and address these particular concerns? Because I actually, contrary to popular belief, I believe that it's really resting in the laps of you guys. The police department's getting a lot of the pressure or the heat from it, but you guys are in control of whether or not we take our time with this, not the police department. And so I would ask that you defer this, not just till next meeting, but let's have what the mayor said we would have, is a very deliberative process that's much more open. So those of us who have been here in this community for years, we've done a lot of good work in this community. We don't feel like we have to come up here and rush through all of our points and hope that you get it. Why, why can't we have the type of environment and setting that allows us to really vet this process? Because as Dural mentioned, there is not a crisis here. The chief has not identified where officers are being hurt on some astronomical basis. What are the reports of officer injuries? What are all those injuries? There's so many different questions that still need to be answered. I think we can be patient with this process. Thank you for your time.
Can I make an announcement?
Look.
Real quick. I just wanted to say that I'm very happy to announce, as I wear with my Citizens With Conviction T-shirt, that by the power invested into our late, great, honorable Governor Pat Quinn, I did receive a pardon for my conviction, and I am eligible and able and willing to serve in various different capacities. Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Actually, Aaron, I totally agree with you. And in fact, I prepared a statement tonight that I've already passed around to council members. And I'm just going to go and read the first two sentences here, because I'd like us to begin this, begin discussion discussion tonight and move in a deliberative and cautious manner, keeping this in committee until we're ready, though I do acknowledge the many months that have gone into it. But, but they've gotten this to the point, but we don't need to rush this final step, and we should continue in the usual Urbana-inclusive style. We do need to fill the third ward vacancy. We need to listen to and address the concerns that have been raised by those who still oppose this, oppose the use of tasers. And I, you know, we've got this policy that's been developed, and I've got a number of questions yet to ask. And I suspect, I don't, you know, I see, I see a couple nods in here, and I have spoken with other council members, so I know that this is just the beginning of the conversation. Now, I would also add that, that I'm sort of watching the clock here, and there's a whole pile of papers that came in. A lot of them came in late, so we can't judge. And the last time that happened, we ended up being here till 11:30, because I didn't invoke the five-minute rule, the five-minute to three-minute rule. The Open Meetings Act allows us to restrict public meeting, public input to two hours total. And that's why, you know, if you have a lot of people speaking, you ask them not to be redundant, and you cut the time down. And then we have the flexibility. So, so that's where we are with the Open Meetings Act. We just want to get out of here by 11:00 if we possibly can tonight. But this is the, you know, to me, and I think the council's nodding in agreement, this is the beginning of the discussion. So, so let's work through this and try to get as many of the concerns answered as we go. And then I'll ask the rest, I'll read the rest of my statement later, and, but I think your message has been heard, and, and I think the council was already at, in that, in that frame of reference.
Okay, I have one last public input card from Matt Torino in opposition, does not wish to testify regarding taser use. Diane.
I'd like to ask Chief Connolly to speak to the issue of officer injuries, because I know that was something, that was a huge factor in bringing this issue to us at the very beginning. And we haven't really spent much time on that, but-
We haven't, but Lieutenant Searle's provided in a previous packet. And as I said this evening, I've provided a box of information concerning taser implementation, the Department of Justice studies concerning its use. Officer injuries was provided in a previous packet. I'm not prepared to share with you all of the information concerning officer injuries. I am prepared to say that this 10-month process, I wrote down a number of, of concerns that people have expressed, you know, with respect to body cameras, way beyond the pay. It's amazing how people hear certain segments of what I say and lock into that and then quote me as verbatim, with dismissing everything else that I said. Pay is certainly an issue, the cost involved. But more importantly is the backend, the city attorney mentioned an issue of redacting for body cameras. You know, our eavesdropping law doesn't even allow us to address body cameras at this point. So for us to wait for body cameras three years down the road before tasers are introduced, I think is putting, it's just defeating the purpose, in my opinion, of the direction that we're going. So I'm all for body cameras, but I'm not in a position to wait another three years, because inevitably we are going to be put in a position where people are going to get hurt. Mr. Smythe, the policy was put on the website for well over two months. Eight people responded. I addressed those issues within reason concerning that, and it was implemented. We've talked about this for almost one year. February will be one year. At some point, we have to make a decision as to whether or not we're going to move forward. And I hear the concerns of the, of the community, and that's why I think it's so important that the Civilian Police Review Board have the opportunity to review this. And we can always adjust it if something is, if they're uncomfortable with it, if the mayor's uncomfortable with it, we can adjust it. But I, and it's a long, drawn-out explanation, Diane, to your question about officer injuries, but I don't have, I'm not prepared to speak about all the statistical information, other than nationally, it's abundantly clear that officer injuries and suspect or subject injuries are reduced drastically by the use of a taser.
Charlie.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and talk about the four questions, which you've got a copy of. So let's talk about this, this, the policy one. What will be, what do you foresee is the role of the mayor and council to review and modify the tasers policy as put forward? Should we discover that needs some tweaking now or later? You know, is the, is the policy changed by you without consultation, the mayor, council? How, how are we going to tweak and fine tune this policy? You know, this is clearly the prerogative of department heads, and that's what we pay staff to do. But because this is such a sensitive issue, you know, we need a little give and take on this one.
Well, I, well, I think a year is a pretty good give. And I understand your concerns, but at some point, I-
Well, I'm not asking, but I'm asking, you know, but I asked, I'm asking going forward, as put forward, should it need tweaking now or later, you know, in this last stage here? What do you foresee? You know, it's a good policy. People have spoken to that.
Do this, as a, as a city council, say every six months, we're going to review it, and if we're not comfortable with it, then we won't fund it any further. I mean, you, as a city council, have a lot of authority to do a lot of different things concerning we, you know, there's different branches designed to play different roles and make different decisions. You hired me as the police chief to write policy and make policy matters for the police department. And I will work very closely, and I have worked very closely with you, with the Civilian Police Review Board, with the Human Relations Commission, with anybody who wants to work with me concerning trying to make this a restrictive approach. But at some point, we have to make a decision.
No, and, and I think we'll get there. I think we'll, we'll get there. But, okay, so in, in the same lines here, you know, the, the issue of grouping the, the review of the taser, taser deployment or display being in there. And I understand Jim's concerns and the stuff that's been described. But at the beginning of the use of tasers, is there some additional mechanism that you could foresee, so that we could get some early feedback, even, you know, before review? You know, because I think the first or second or third time this thing, that a taser gets used, you know, there's going to be, you know, I'm going to want to know why, you know.
My response was, well, I'm going to have to defer to the city attorney. And the whole reason that that whole process was changed, because Mr. Simon reviewed it and wasn't comfortable with-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Can you foresee some kind of alternative way, so that we can get some information, both to us and the public where appropriate?
Obviously, you're dealing with a balance of policy issue. The concern that I have is that all the information developed in connection with this ultimately becomes a treasure trove for some would-be plaintiff who wants to play off the CPRB review against an internal police review. And if I were a plaintiff's attorney, I'd look at this and say, boy, I've got myself a goldmine. Here we have the CPRB saying X, and the internal review by the police department saying Y, and me as a plaintiff's attorney would say, obviously, this city doesn't know what they're doing. On the one hand, their commissioner or board is saying X- On the one hand, their commissioner or board is saying X, and on the other hand, their police officer or their police internal review is saying Y. I don't care who's right, just pay me my million dollars for my plaintiff. And that's the concern. I don't think it should be the policy of the city to generate evidence for criminal pursuit, I mean, other than investigation, but ancillary evidence for a civil proceeding or be involved in a process that influences the outcome of a civil or criminal proceeding. That's why some of the reports would not be included. Rather, I think it's, at least from the legal perspective, a fair policy is to ascertain by looking at a pattern of conduct, is the use of tasers being handled appropriately? Not a single incident, which likely would be the subject of a lawsuit anyway. An excessive use of force involving a taser is very likely going to lead to either a personal injury lawsuit or a civil rights lawsuit. And then the courts will handle that and address it, one way or the other. They'll reach a decision. Or it may ultimately, if it's egregious enough, may involve a criminal proceeding, and that court will address the issues one way or another and make its finding. That's why the grouping has been. Now, if the city council, as a matter of policy, is not as concerned as I, taking a very conservative approach, asked in terms of exposing the city to potential liability, as long as the council's informed of those risks, you certainly can make whatever decision regarding some intermediate, you know, beginning process. Review two reports, review one report, however you choose to do it. You get to a point, though, where you begin to run afoul of the union contracts. If you're reviewing one report at a time, that means you're focusing on a single officer or group of officers' conduct, and I do think that may ultimately lead to a grievable situation under the union contract.
I had to follow up on that, then. There's an internal, and there's a regular internal review that would be occurring anyway, right? So you would get, regardless of the number of events, you'd see each one, right?
Correct, as they, right. Just like anytime you pull a firearm, just like anytime you deploy pepper spray, just like anytime you use your baton. We have a Response to Resistance Committee comprised of defensive tactics instructors, criminal investigators, a supervisor who analyzes and then provide me with input on the best practices for training in the future. And then we have an internal review for discipline when we feel that it's inappropriate. The Civilian Police Review Board, unique to Urbana, Illinois, almost exclusively to the state of Illinois, for the most part, is probably, with this taser policy, the most restrictive that you can ask for.
Yeah, so there is some, some level of review. At least the mayor can talk to you about it, and so, so if they're, at least at the, I'm more concerned with at the beginning of the use of this, that, that, that we've not ever looked something. And so I think that's what we pay you to be chief for, so I'll leave it at that. Two, two other questions, it's a little more complicated here, and then I'll shut up. The policies that has written, the ordinances and whatever, seem to imply that any officer with appropriate CIT training and then the taser training could eventually carry a taser. I'm not sure if I want to go that far right now, is to leave it unlimited and opened. You know, you're talking about six officers now. I could see putting a limit of 10 or 15 on right now so that we don't grow exponentially here. You know, how, how do you foresee going forward over time?
Well, I want to, I want to assess the six that we get, and this mail, this entire year could be for naught because it could be completely uneventful. It could save somebody's life. I don't know what the results are going to be. So I want to start with six. I want to see where it goes. We've decided that we were going to come back to speak with the city council and provide a report so we can reassess it.
That's a two-year, right? In two years?
Correct. But if you want to make it a year, we can make it a year. If you want to make it six months, we can make it six months. I'm fine working with you guys. I just, I think we need to move forward.
Yeah, okay, I guess, I guess, let's think about a number there and, and think about the timeframe. I think, of course, part of it would have, you know, if we go forward with allowing the use of tasers, you know, it might just sort of depend on how, how they get used over time, as to how quickly we need to look at stuff.
Right.
So, but please think about, about a number. You know, to me, right now, the use of tasers in the city, the issuance of tasers is a bit experimental, and I sort of want to mimic the deliberative action that officers take now of calling somebody from the sheriff's department or calling somebody from the UIUC's police department for some help. And I sort of want to, I want to stay in that, that frame of mind. Okay, so finally, I've heard the discussion on body cams, and I really wish we could get that first. Could we, you know, could you please talk to our IT department and, and consider some small level of use of cam, of cameras, at least for those officers who are also carrying tasers? So we have a subset and some beginning use that wouldn't take as much of cost as issuing to everybody, but at least we'd have a start. You know, I'd like to come up with something intermediate, if at all possible.
Okay. As I said earlier, Charlie, this, the current state statute doesn't even allow us, under the eavesdropping statute, to use a body camera unless it is in a traffic setting. They didn't even address the issue of body cameras. So in other words, I walk into a home, and I ask the person to allow me to videotape, and they say, absolutely not, you turn the camera off. And then we tase somebody, and then we're, we're put in a position where we now have to explain why the camera wasn't on. Secondly, and just, this is so important, we're not prepared personnel-wise at this point to handle the volume of video evidence that is going to be created by body cameras with respect to additional people having the ability to redact it. The people, the techniques, and the, and I wish, as I said, we're going through the process right now of looking at a variety of different body cameras. I can tell you already, the cradle, putting the body camera in the cradle is not an effective tool for us because I don't think that information will be downloaded and we'll be able to provide it. I just think if we go into this too quickly, we're going to end up, inevitably, there will be people in the community saying, see, the body camera was being used to hide evidence because we're not prepared to present it in a professional, appropriate fashion. I understand body cameras are all the thing. We just don't, we don't have the research that's available at this point.
So the last question here is follow-up, then, is, okay, so you're telling me that state law doesn't really permit them, but, but the sheriff's department is using them. How are they, are they using them just for, they just turn them on for traffic?
No, they ask for consent.
They ask, oh, they ask for consent?
Right, and, and I would be happy to do that. Again, I need to clarify, I am 100%. I was so happy to hear people in our community are saying they're supportive of body cameras because I am 100% in support of body cameras.
Well, I, I think we move as quickly as we can, then, on body cameras.
Absolutely, I'm more than willing to do that. But at least give me the opportunity to research it so that we don't spend $100,000 or more of the city's...
We don't have $100,000.
We've got to be careful what we ask for.
To just toss out there as an experiment without, so I agree.
Well, I'm just saying, we don't want to commit too quickly because I really don't think that the technology is available unless you want to give additional people to manage all of the backend stuff, which I am, again, more than willing to start to work on.
Well, I was going to, I was suggesting that as an experiment and maybe trial, you know, trying a few things, just the six, you, six cameras to go with the six tasers. You know, that was sort of where I was going, you know, something intermediate, you could try it as a trial.
Sure.
I don't know if you can time it as quick, you know, like I said, something, come up with something if you can.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah. I did have a question. You, you were talking about the difficulties of using a body camera because of state law. Does that affect the camera on the taser?
No, it's exempt, as is motor vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Eric?
So I have read a number of papers on, that describe different jurisdictions' experiences with tasers. And based on that, and typically, the, the, the results are, as the chief has said, that is there are, there does tend to be a reduction in injuries on the part of both police officers and citizens whom the police officer encounters. But I think that, I'm thinking about the cluster of five, and I do appreciate, Jim, that you want to protect us, maximally protect us from liability. Sometimes, but there's sometimes a trade-off between protection and transparency. You can protect yourself so much that there's, you, you, there's a trust issue. So I would, I would really prefer to take a little bit of a chance on, you know, the protection that you're talking about for greater transparency and review each deployment of a taser, each use of a taser as it is done. I think that that, I think that that is, is really important. I just want to say that I really have, over the course of the time since this issue came up, I have listened to all of the concerns that have been raised, and I've actively listened. So I have researched, I have thought about and researched every issue that's been raised. I have, I have read so much about the incident in the Seattle Airport and what happened there and what happened afterwards and the changes in policy that went into that. I've read about the woman, the pregnant woman in Seattle who was tasered. I have, there was a question about whether excited delirium existed, so I went into the medical literature and I read the report of the task force of the American Society for Emergency Medicine that concluded that there is such a state as excited delirium that defined it, and there's follow-up literature that talks about how it should be dealt with in the emergency room. I have looked at all of the literature that I could on the lethality of tasers, and I have, and also I have consulted some people from other communities. I talked to three African-American legislators who represent African-American districts in Chicago, where the police officers do have tasers. I talked to L.G. Sims and Art Turner and Marcus Evans, all of whom will be colleagues of Carroll's after tomorrow. And every single one of them said that they were glad that the Chicago police had tasers, that on balance, they felt this reduced the level of force and violence between police officers and citizens. I talked to the, I talked to the treasurer of the Bremerton/Washington NAACP. Now, why would I talk to him? Because he's my brother. He's the same color as I am, but he decided this was his issue and this was his cause, and so he's been active in the NAACP for years. And I asked him about tasers there, and he said, no, they're, you know, the NAACP chapter there is perfectly comfortable with the police officers there having tasers. What I have read, I'm really uncomfortable, I, I feel as though I have had an obligation to listen to you, to think as hard as I could about what you've said, to research and find the facts and apply logic to those facts. I'm not comfortable disagreeing with you all because on many way, in many ways, I'm accustomed to agreeing with you. But I honestly believe that the issuance of tasers to Urbana police, under the guidelines that have been put forth by the Civilian Police Review Board, would result in a reduction in use of force and, and injuries for both citizens and police. So I have an obligation, I will have, I feel that I have an obligation to support the policy and support the purchase of tasers, in spite of the fact that it does make me feel, and, and I think Ricardo expressed it very well. He was in acute discomfort when he testified that he was coming out with a policy that seemed reasonable to him. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but what I got from him was that there was a policy that seemed reasonable to him, but he was very troubled by the fact that people he liked and respected disagreed with it. And I'm troubled by that, too, but I'm going to have to vote for what I think is the, is the, is the best thing for the community and for the citizens of the community. So I will, I will, I will support ultimately. Now, I did say, one of you called me over the weekend and pointed out to me that most of the ordinance was missing from the website, and we had gotten it in our paper packet, but it wasn't there. And so I did write around to my colleagues and said, maybe we should, you know, defer voting on this on grounds that we haven't given the, the public notice that we usually give, although, as Jim said, we're not legally required to have the full text of what we vote on, but it is our practice, and it's a good practice. So I will, you know, I would be comfortable with deferring the vote for a couple of weeks on the grounds of this public notice, but when we do vote on it, I anticipate supporting it.
Any further comments? Diane?
Well, I'm, I'm not going to repeat what my colleagues have, have said before me in the interest of time, but I would like to add one, one comment, and that is, the one, one that has been compelling for me is, in addition to everything else that has been mentioned tonight, is that tasers are, have been used in Urbana, they are being used in Urbana, and they will be used in Urbana because, but with no Urbana oversight at this point. In the past, and we had reports of officers have been called in from Champaign County, and I believe from the U of I, but we could just as easily draw on officers from Rantoul or Mohammed or Tolono, all of whom have tasers. They are being used in this city with no oversight, no accountability, and no review, and with various, varied degrees of training. And that, for me, is a very important factor to consider here. I would rather have our very, very comprehensive training and issuance policy in place and that, that guides their use, and I think that also is going to minimize the potential for abuse. And if there is, we are in control here, not Tolono, not Rantoul, not the U of I. And, and that, that's an important factor to consider. I, I was, I am ready tonight to move forward on this. I think we have spent months discussing this, we have spent months studying this, we have all, everyone, the public, the CPRB, the, the police, the council, we have all put in many, many, many hours of research and, and thought. We have an excellent policy in place, we can tweak it as we go forward. The CPRB has written a process for, for that body to follow as well. If we didn't have the CPRB, I probably wouldn't be comfortable doing this at all, but we do have this review body in place, and I have confidence in them. It's a public body, they will act in the public, on behalf of the public, and they are fellow citizens acting on our behalf. As I went through reading over the months, and I read as much as I could, I, I kept a running checklist of the criteria and the policies and the items that I wanted to make sure our own policy had, and it, it included things like, of course, cameras that recorded audio and video. It, it included prohibiting taser use in the stun mode. I mean, that was a big, that was a big factor for me because that's the source of a lot of the abuse of these things in the past. It included no use on elder... It included no use on elderly or on children or on pregnant women or some of the other categories that we've talked about. The, the documenting, the reporting, the minimizing the multiple discharges, the medical treatment following the use, the presence of a supervisor after it's been used or preferably if, if they anticipate using it. And then the, the level of training and starting with a limited number of TASERS. And I'm fine with saying, let's do the follow-up evaluation after 12 months instead of 24 months. I think that's a better way to go. But every single, every single point that I had written down over the last year has been incorporated into our, into our written policy. And I, I am thankful for the people who devoted the time and energy and effort that went into this. I think we have an excellent policy. And as I said, I wanted to make the amendment as far as the requiring the reports to be given to the mayor, city council, not making that an option. And the changes to the, the, the policy that I noted before. But, but I, again, I, I think the policy that we are proposing will protect the rights of the citizens while providing our police officers with a tool that they need to do their job better. And also to give them a little bit better chance of coming home safe at night, for everyone to come home at the end of the day. And so I'm ready to move forward on this and see how it goes. And we always have the ability to, to make changes. We always have the ability to make changes, and we will if we need to.
Want me to go or stay?
I might want to stay. Dennis?
Okay, so because of the long debate and everything, as a, maybe as a compromise, I would just suggest, I'll make a motion that we keep this in committee and we'll see it in two weeks, and we don't have to defer it for a month or anything. We just watch it as it grows. We're having this useful conversation, and I think that the community needs to know that you've got the most thoughtful city council that has the most open-minded process of reviewing important information, and you really ought to respect it. Anyways, I make the motion, we keep this in committee, we'll talk about it in two weeks.
Second. Okay, by rule then, this is, Charlie?
No, this, it's not, it's not, it's not deferring, but there's a motion on the floor. And I think, I think it's important to get the rest of the questions out here, but, but, you know, if, but we need to get all the questions out here. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to volunteer to try to synthesize bits and pieces. You know, there've been different suggestions in here, feedback from the chief, feedback from others. I would suggest that we try to work some of these things in with the chief, you know, and have that ready in two weeks. Now that people know that the, where the use of force policy is on the website, and maybe we can put it also in somewhere in one of the council packet, piece of information so people can find that URL. You know, it's one of those things where, where, you know, you know it's out there, but you don't really start thinking about it and looking at it until it's in your face. So I understand that aspect of it, and so, so it's always worth, you know, another look. And so what I would encourage people to do is look at it over the next week and come back, either give, give us direct feedback or, or come back and speak next week at city council, even though this isn't on the agenda, public input, you can have your, your, your three or five minutes, depending on the number of people, and, and, and give us some feedback then as well. And, and of course, we'll see this, you know, if this motion passes, we'll see it again in two weeks. But I think it's important that everybody get all their questions out here even before we take a final vote on this.
So we're going to have, I think the discussion now would be on the deferral.
It's not a deferral, it's just to keep it in committee, but we can still, we can...
So the discussion would be on the motion?
Yeah, we can vote to keep it in committee.
How about if, how about if he just withdraws the emotion, the motion at this point in time and everybody raises their specific concerns? I think from a parliamentary perspective, that's cleaner.
Sure.
Because there's a motion and a second, so we probably ought to withdraw that and then everybody can discuss their specific concerns and we can list those.
Can I, can I comment?
Sure.
Okay, so, and many times when we have tweaking, you want to call it, I hate that word, tweaking to do on, on, on the thing, what we do is we, 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 we make our recommendations, we write them down so that we have a list to go through, and maybe the next time we have a meeting, we can then refine language and it'll be moved maybe to a closer resolution as far as all the details that we want to talk about now. But it's already 10 o'clock, we've talked about this particular issue for several hours, and we have other things to do on the, other business of the city to attend to, and I think that we can submit suggestions during, in the next two weeks so that when we come back again, we'll have very specific things to talk about for making adjustments.
Charlie?
Well, I, I still think we need to let Mike and Bill ask any questions here before we vote on this motion.
Right, and we don't have to vote on it immediately, we can still have some conversation before we hit the vote.
Bill, the... I was just going to comment on the motion to keep it in committee. I'd support that mostly because of the mix-up on the website where the ordinance wasn't complete. I mean, I didn't realize that until just today when, when Eric pointed it out, or yesterday, whenever that was, because we got it in the packet and so we saw the full ordinance, but there was only, I think, one page of the actual ordinance mixed in with the PDF. So I think people deserve to at least be able to see that, and we've only seen that ordinance for four days, so I know it's been a long process, just since Thursday, it's been a long process, but we haven't seen the actual ordinance until just last week. But the policy, I took a good look at and familiar with and really don't have any more concerns than what I expressed earlier.
It's my understanding also that IT did get the ordinance and everything else on the website this morning.
Okay, so it's there now.
Okay, then, so I guess the sense of the council, I will defer my comments to another day. So I think the sense of the council here is that everyone is going to, I'm not sure how, but submit their concerns. I assume that's an email to whom?
I, I think it's okay, Mr. Simon can correct me if I'm wrong, as long as we don't reply to all, we can share our suggested amendments to all. Are we still within the Open Meetings Act, okay?
No.
Okay.
Because even though you may not be replying, you will be communicating, you'll have interactive communication simply by disseminating information. I think you're probably better off sending your comments to the chief or myself, and then we could send them out, but if, if...
I have all the comments written down. Let me take a stab at suggesting the changes based on your input, and then if you want to not tweak it but adjust it, then we can do that.
But once it goes back out to you, however, whether it's in a memo or just a list of thoughts and changes and comments, you all, of course, can't use the, the reply all or communicate, even in string fashion, you know? Eric communicating with Charlie, who then communicates with Diane, et cetera, that would be a violation of the Act.
Okay.
So it sounds, it sounds to me like we ought to, if anybody has any comments, forward them to the, the chief and Mr. Simon, and they can, as staff, they can act in accordance on those comments and recommendations and then report back to the council in, in open meeting. So the motion and the second before the council, before the committee, I'm sorry, is, is to, is to hold, is to hold this ordinance agenda item in committee for two weeks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it. How about we have a two-minute recess? Is that all right?
Good chair.
Two minutes. All right, the two minutes having expired for our recess, committee will come back to order. The next item is agenda item number seven, ordinance number 2015-01-006, an ordinance to amend Urbana City Code, Chapter 19, Article 3, Division 1, Section 19-22A, concerning qualifications for service on the City of Urbana Civilian Police Review Board. Madam Mayor.
Yes, I, I asked about this because Grace Mitchell, who had been the vice chair of the civilian review board, lived in Urbana for many years and was a counselor at the high school for many years, and she's really a very smart woman. She's an African-American woman, and I thought she brought a lot to the civilian review board, but she left because she moved to Champaign. And I would like to change the ordinance to allow someone who has previously lived in Urbana or to be on the civilian review, review board. So that's where this request came from, from me. And we've had other people, Greg Chu has served on committees for us, and he taught at Urbana but lived in Champaign. So I don't think it's a terrible thing to have somebody from Champaign as long as they have Urbana connections. So that's my request because I really like her and I think she'd do a great job.
Okay, I do have one public input card, but I have been informed that by rule that, that folks who are wishing to testify before the committee or the council are restricted to one subject matter.
Five minutes, five minutes total.
Five minutes total, all right. It is from Dural Cruz. I will defer to the wishes of the committee, whether or not you would like to entertain as, come on, Dural, give us a Cliff's, give us a Cliff's Notes. I didn't either, I didn't either until right now.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay, let's not waste time talking, let's just say it.
Spit it out.
I, I would, I'm, I'm having difficulty understanding the policy regarding residency as it applies to boards and commissions and task force because I see an inconsistent...
Is your microphone on?
Yes, an inconsistent policy. And I strongly believe that all positions on Urbana, boards and commissions and city council and task force should be filled by Urbana residents, plain and simple. Okay, now, the reason I'm bringing this up is because I would like the city council to consider looking at the practice to see if they can develop a more uniform and consistent policy that makes sense to citizens. And I'll give you a couple of examples why I don't understand how this process works because it seems very subjective and inconsistent. For example, later you're going to be looking at the formation of a task force regarding health care.
You got one minute.
And in the bottom of that particular paragraph, it says, "The task force will be composed of residents of the City of Urbana and the City of Danville." That makes sense. It's got those two parties have agreed. It doesn't say that it's going to be citizens from Champaign or other people, even though people might say, you know, if you need health experts, there may be people outside of Urbana that could help this task force analyze this, but the mayor's suggesting it only be residents of Urbana and Danville. I will bring up the topic issue of the I dot Traffic Stop Task Force. The city committed a task force that had 11 positions. You only filled 10. One person did not, or declined, and the mayor never filled that position, and there were dozens of local residents that were willing to serve on that task force. Currently, the 10 members, three are local and seven are outside of the city. That makes no sense to me either. It seems willy-nilly, and what a policy of not, not looking to Urbana first, I think, creates a sense of disenfranchisement of local residents. It, yeah, well, if that's it, that's good. But I would like to see you address it overall because I see no consistency to it, and people in Urbana, some of them have been affected by that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Charlie?
So it strikes me that, that we have different boards and commissions, some with different needs. I believe the plant commission has somebody outside the city specifically because they want representation from the ETJ. The task force was to look at data that's across jurisdictions, so I think that was part of the, so I really think it is board by board, and the mission of the board or commission that we're looking at, that, that would, would, you know, and, and that, that sort of directly answers Dural's question from my point of view. But in this particular case, because this is the Urbana Civilian Police Review Board, in this particular case, because it is Urbana, directly Urbana, I really feel like it should be just an Urbana citizen. But that's because I think this is a strictly Urbana jurisdiction type thing. If we were, you know, and it's different from, say, the Art Commission where we needed, we, you know, again, are looking at stuff across city boundaries or something like that. We've, we've got other criteria, so I don't think it is quite willy-nilly. But when I, when it's specific to Urbana, I think it should stay in Urbana.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I would like to say that these are judgment calls on my part on who I think the best qualified person is, and since Grace Mitchell already has been on it, she's been trained and she's an excellent person, she's my first choice for this. And certainly we don't require all our employees to live in Urbana, and I think if we have someone who has a special ability or expertise, it depends on the commission. And I think that hers is fine for this because she's already served on it, she's already been trained, she was the vice chairman, and I would like to be able to appoint her. So that's why I did this.
Bill?
I guess I would be okay with letting someone complete their term once they're appointed. I wouldn't think that they'd have to immediately leave just because they move. I might even be convinced to put it in something like they had to live in Urbana 12 months of the past three years or something, but at some point, if somebody's moved and, and they aren't likely to come back or, you know, they're, they've been out of the city for two or three years, they kind of lose touch, I think, with the residents. So I'd be a little bit flexible with this, especially with completing a term, but I don't see any reason to, for the police review board, like Charlie said, it has this kind of a, I mean, it's hard enough to get police officers from Urbana, we could at least have our review board from Urbana. So I think that it makes sense to have those be Urbana residents.
Dennis?
Yeah, I think that it's too important, a review board, to share with other communities. Also, I was contacted by Scotty Dassett, he's one of the persons who's been the heart and soul of the, of this review board and has done more actual work on it than probably all the other individuals combined as far as, you know, actually producing something. He stopped, he's out of town today, but he stopped at my house specifically to say that he disagreed with this policy that's being proposed. And we also heard from Ricardo Diaz, he doesn't support it. So I'm, there are good people in town, and I know that it takes a while for people to get training, and as Scott Dassett said, you know, you got to do ride-alongs with the police, you have to take training, you know, this is an obligation, but let's start local before we go, go, you know, outside of town.
Any further comments?
I would like to say that I did respond to Scotty because he, you know, I thought he was kind of jumping to conclusions. I was talking about a specific person, and so you might want to wait till he gets back and he has a chance to read my email. But anyway, that was my request because I think she's really a wonderful woman and adds a lot to the commission.
I changed my mind about speaking. I do not think it's good policy to pass an ordinance for one specific individual, and I get the sense that, that the council feels the same way. I, I, I'm fine with Grace completing her term if there is, is there a term for the CPRB?
Well, actually, I mean, if you want to have that be the criterion, maybe we could do that because that might be a graceful way out of, graceful, she's Grace, graceful way out of this because she did not complete the term.
Okay, or, or even make an exception for one individual, you can make a case for that, but I just don't think it's good policy to, to write an ordinance for one person.
Well, this is just to open it up, it's not really for one person. If there is unique circumstances.
And I believe that we should, that the police review board should be composed of Urbana residents.
So, I would make a motion that we defeat ordinance number two thousand fifteen oh one zero zero six.
Thank you, Dennis.
I'm not sure that that's in order...
Let's move it and vote on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Well, you could just...
The question is...
I'll just withdraw it. If I don't have the support for it, I'll just withdraw it. How about that? She is not, she's not on the board, and we're looking for people, and I thought she'd done a really good job, and I'd like to see her back on the board. So that's the reason I did this, because when we first wrote the ordinance, we excluded anyone, so I thought we should be a little bit more flexible. So that's the reason for doing this. And I deliberately did not want it involved with the TASER thing, because it's a completely separate issue regarding the Civilian Review Board. And the Civilian Review Board, I will like to point out, was a project that I brought to the council.
Was... Charlie? So Grace has completed her term?
No, she did not complete her term, because she moved, and our ordinance was very specific. And so I, she left, because we said, well, you can't do it if you live in Champaign.
And how...
And then I started reconsidering, you know, a year later, because I thought she had really been a very productive person on the board. She was the Vice Chair, and she came and talked with us. And she was there from the beginning, as everybody on there has been. But if you don't, if you don't want to do it that way, then that's fine.
There might be sentiment to allow somebody to complete their term, given the training that's involved.
Well, I think their terms, yeah, I think their terms are about to expire, so it's a nice thought, but it wouldn't be very practical. So how about if I just withdraw it, and maybe we can have some conversations one-on-one, and see if we can come up with a better alternative?
Okay, so I guess it would be a motion to...
Well, can I just withdraw it, since I... Oh, maybe I can't.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So this agenda item will be withdrawn.
Okay, thank you.
Agenda item number nine, a resolution deeming certain funds in the Special Tax Allocation Fund for the downtown Urbana Tax Increment Redevelopment Project area as surplus funds and directing the payment and distribution thereof, resolution number twenty fifteen dash zero one dash zero zero two R.
You see an ordinance or a resolution like this each year, and this is part of a planned payment to the other taxing districts that overlay TIF one. You will notice this year there was a substantial increase in the payment, and the reason for that is, even though assessed valuation in the TIF didn't grow by much, tax rates increased significantly, which resulted in a significant increase in property tax increment revenue. So there's an increase of 12%. The total distribution will be $273,962, which will be distributed to all of the taxing bodies.
Bill?
So, I would be remiss without asking, the City of Urbana's portion of thirty-five thousand, if you look at the tax rates for the library, it's fifty-six cents out of our dollar thirty-five, so that would come out to fourteen thousand seven hundred and four dollars. Will that amount be transferred to the library?
It has not been budgeted that way. It's budgeted to go into the general fund.
Hmm. I see my, I see that. That's the next, actually, your chance to fix that is in the next ordinance, where it actually distributes the money, I think.
Oh, okay, the next one distributes it.
I'll second it.
So think about that.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Can I just, a clarification, that the next ordinance doesn't really distribute the money, it just corrects the budget that is not correct now, because the amount of the distribution that was estimated is smaller than what it's actually going to be, and it adjusts the property tax revenue.
So it...
So where...
Let's make a motion.
Yeah, so I would... Charlie?
Let me just, so where would the right place to, if Bill wants to make a motion directing that fourteen thousand or whatever goat of this review funded to the library, where would that go? In which of these two, or is that a separate, or could that be put into the actual ordinance, number ten?
I think, if you want to just add that to the ordinance, then I could take a look at how to make it happen. I mean, obviously, it would be a portion of what's going to the City of Urbana. I haven't actually calculated that. But if you wanted to maybe say that we would prorate it based on the library's share of property tax revenue...
Since this is a committee, the whole, can we just make, ask for staff direction to fix that before the next council meeting with the... Or maybe it could be a motion that we would ask staff to separate out the library portion and direct that to the library budget?
Yeah, sure.
So that could actually be part of the motion, sending this to council.
Okay. So I move to send ordinance number, which is it, nine?
Resolution first.
Resolution...
Number nine.
Number nine.
Yeah, resolution number twenty fifteen dash zero one dash zero zero two R to council with recommendation for approval, and to distribute the City of Urbana portion appropriately to, for the library to get their prorated portion by the tax rate.
Any discussion on the motion? Charlie?
I was just going to point out, Dural's not here, but he should know that the reason we have this distribution was the agreement extending TIF one with the taxing bodies. We set this up, and so this was, this was a mutually agreed-on activity, and we've been doing it for a number of years. This wasn't, this isn't the first year we've done this.
And if he was here, I'd probably give him three minutes.
Yeah, and what a great idea. This is a, you know, this is a kind of an extra fund that we hadn't thought would be part of our budget, but now it's become part of the budget, and it allows us to fill a gap that's a vital and useful one, which Bill Brown has been an advocate for, and that is to supply the library with needed funds, which helps support its process and its mission. So I'm glad he's made that resolution amendment.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it. Okay, agenda item number ten, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero one dash zero zero five, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
Basically, this increases the budget for the distributions based on the larger payment that we discussed, and also reflects the increase in the property tax increment in the TIF, and I will amend it to accomplish the distribution to the library that was mentioned previously.
Charlie?
I'll move to send to council with that caveat included with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Agenda item number twelve, being such a late hour, do you want to hold off on this, maybe for a couple of weeks?
If you want, I could, I could just briefly tell you and get the information.
Or we could hold off on it forever.
Just distribute it. Do you want to hold off on it forever?
I heard editing going on.
Okay, okay. Let me just go through this, because this is a pretty much discussed topic in the country right now. And last, in twenty thirteen, I gave you all a copy of this Time Magazine cover story, Why Medical Bills Are Killing Us by Stephen Brill, and he has now written a book. The title of this article was Bitter Pill. And he's written a book called America's Bitter Pill, and talking about how, what the federal government is doing in terms of Medicare reimbursements, which are greater to hospitals, is actually driving the increase in insurance rates. And a couple of years ago, Health Alliance made the statement that health insurance costs more in Champaign County than it does in Chicago. And I was kind of surprised by that, but the Chicago Tribune did this article in December. And if you look down on the chart that's right below this map, the colored map, if you compare our area, which is Area Nine, with Area One, which is Chicago, you'll see in every category of the premiums for health insurance, that the one here is 35% higher than the one in Chicago.
So, yeah, so I, you know, Bill, we communicated over the weekend, and Bill finally figured out why I was getting 22% and you were getting 35%. And this is because your 35% was from people who simply continued their old policy from 2014 to 2015. The 22% was people who shopped around and got the best deal.
Right. But I think, you know, most people probably keep the same one. So I was just looking at one part of the chart, but...
If people do keep the same one, that they're very ill-advised, because they're getting screwed.
Well, 22% is what you said for the people who moved to a different one?
22% for people who shopped around.
Well, 22% is a lot, and so is 35%. They're both very significant numbers. And this, this gentleman's book, he was on Sixty Minutes last night, and he's been on NPR. And there also have been studies in North Carolina, the two biggest newspapers in North Carolina studied this whole phenomenon, or why are healthcare costs going up so much? In this country, we are spending a much higher proportion of our total economy on healthcare than any other country in the world. And I think, I wrote a resolution, a proposal for a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was, and I changed it, because I wanted to talk with the university about it, and the chancellor, you know, really didn't want to get into that. So what I've done is just focus on us and Danville, and certainly if Champaign wants to be involved in it, they can do that, too. But they haven't seemed to be as affected by it as we are. So I separated out the whole tax issue, because we're dealing with that in the courts, and just want to understand, what is the economic impact in this region of this disparity that we're paying so much more for health insurance, whether it's 22% or 35%? So I talked with the mayor of Danville. We were talking to them back in last summer. And I think there are just a lot of questions that we should ask and get answers to, and I think there are people with expertise who live in Urbana or who work at the university, and that we can get some answers to these things, because I think this is a huge economic problem for the country, and it's a very big problem for us. And I think we should start thinking about what could be done to solve it. So that's the whole point of this. And if you don't want to act on it today, I just wanted to give you the introduction to it.
Yeah, and so I'll just, you know, share publicly what I, how I responded electronically, which is that insurance costs are not total healthcare costs.
Sure.
Healthcare costs are insurance premiums plus out-of-pocket. So often, insurance policies that have high premiums have low out-of-pocket. So what one must really look at is total healthcare costs. I guess I'd also point out that everybody, almost everybody in the rest of the state, has higher insurance premiums than Chicago. Chicago is the second lowest in the entire state. I've tried to go into, you know, the academic literature on this, and there was a hypothesis that it was really a difference between urban and rural, and that was put forth in the Chicago Tribune article, that rural areas tend to have less competition. But there is a nationwide study that doesn't really find a systematic discrepancy between urban and rural. So it's not just that. But what the studies that I have read have found is that there are almost random differences in the costs for different procedures in different hospitals, that it's, that there's a lot of the costing that, at least if you're an outsider, simply looks irrational. I don't know how to solve that problem, I'm not opposed to studying it, but there is a lot of academic study on it, and there really isn't a simple answer. But what I do think these numbers are telling us, and what I think we could do for our residents, is we could, come fall, have a workshop on how to navigate the insurance market. If you're a university employee, the university will, has, gives guidance on what the different options are. If you're a retiree, SARS gives the workshops on that. But the people, but small businesses and individuals who are going into the healthcare market are really going in without systematic guidance. I think that a community workshop that would, you know, draw in expert from the university whom we could enlist, just to... So one of the things that I get from these numbers is that for those people who stayed, who just stayed with their 2014 plan, in our district, their insurance premiums went up by an average of 9%. The people who shopped around, their premiums went down by two and a half percent. I think if we can help people navigate the market, that would be absolutely the best thing we could do for them. I'm not opposed to studying, but I'm really, I'm really daunted by the possibility that that would, that we would really, we would really make effective progress for our citizens in that way. But I think if we can help them navigate the market, that could be very helpful.
Could I respond to that?
Sure.
I think the problem is the market. And when you look at the profits of hospitals that are called non-profit hospitals, the reports for North Carolina, they had Duke University Hospital with 23% profit. That's more than most companies get. And that's costing all the other businesses and all the families and everyone a lot of money. And the profit for Carl Hospital is 28.5%. And this is after they get done paying all the charity care and all, everything. And what they said in North Carolina is, every year, the hospitals raise their prices. And what's the rationale? The rationale is because they can. They have such huge market power now, that they are actually driving the insurance company increases. So that's why I think it's great to have, we could invite guest speakers, I think that's great. But I also think we should have, like, a systematic look at what is going on, and what does this mean in terms of cost for everyone else? Because what's happening is there's a huge lobby for a very big industry, which is now about 17% of the US economy, and it's getting a bigger and bigger percent every year. And I think that the rest of us need to be educated on what's going on, and start talking about how we can address this. So that's what I think, you know, we could come to some meeting of the minds on this. I agree with you, I want public discussion, but I think it's beyond, how do you navigate the market? I think the real question is, what is wrong with that market?
Diane?
I just need clarification. Our last, well, the contract we just settled, one of the provision, with employees, one of the provisions is the formation of an insurance committee. What role, what is that insurance committee expected to do going forward? I assumed that one of the roles would be to shop around, and...
That's right, they would be navigating the market.
So...
That's a different question than what is the market and what's driving the market.
But that's the, that...
That's their function. And I think one of the main things is that we want our employees to understand health insurance, and so... And so I think, you know, that's one of the reasons we want, this is something that's going up and every year, we were able to get a 3% reduction this year, but we don't have a lot of choices here, and so.
And that's because we negotiated probably for the first, we threatened to.
No, yeah, I, that's right.
Lead and we negotiated, so we, we really.
But a lot of, yeah, but, so, we have to bring our employees into the process. So that's the reason we set up the employee insurance thing, and I think the great benefit was to, of that is that they will actually be wrestling with this issue and come to understand it. But that's really dealing with the current market, and what I'm proposing here is studying why is the market what it is and what can be done about it? Because I think it's being driven by federal law and I think that it's hurting the state and it's hurting all the other, all the businesses and it's certainly hurting families. The biggest cost, cause rather, of bankruptcy in the United States is medical costs. So that's why I think we have to start looking at that.
It seems like that's something the Illinois Municipal League would be very interested in studying. Have they shown any interest?
Illinois Municipal League could, of course, do these things, but I think if we have a community that's being really impacted by this, that with the highest increase in the state, 9.1%, and then Danville paying, you know, 33% more than we are, I think these two communities could, by setting up a study and getting public involvement in the discussion, could help involve the rest of the state. I certainly think that one of the, one of the ways to finance the state government would be if there are not-for-profits that are making these huge profits, they could start paying some of the state bills. And I think that the definition of not-for-profit needs to be looked at.
Bill?
I guess I'd be a little careful basing too much on one article that's kind of a snapshot in time between two years, comparing, you know, if you, if you switch plans and whether you don't. In fact, the, the 35% increase, or the nine, the 9% increase would be if you stuck with your Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan in Champaign County, but if you switched to Health Alliance, turns out you would save 2.5%. So there's, the, the increase is, you know, just in, for one particular plan, the silver plan from 2015, the lowest cost silver plan, so maybe it's one of those deals where it's a lost leader, you know? Like you go to buy milk and you get used to buying milk someplace where it's cheap and then you kind of keep buying your milk there and don't really pay attention while they raise the price, but if you shop around, you can find something else. So maybe they pick, you know, like one plan, a silver plan with the lowest cost, and if you want anything above that lowest level, maybe it's not consistent. So I think there's, you know, a lot of unknowns. I don't, I'm not comfortable with putting 35% in a resolution, for example. But yeah, the, the high cost of healthcare is, is definitely a major impact, and if we're being impacted more, and I think we are, I've, you can go to healthcare.gov and plug in your zip code and, you know, what plan you're interested in, and it looks like we're pretty typically about 20% higher than Chicago. But yeah, maybe not higher than every place else in the state, but 20% is a big difference in if businesses, and if we're paying 20% more for our health insurance, that's, you know, a couple thousand dollars per employee probably, and that's a, a big impact. So I think it's worth looking at, but I don't know if we're the ones to do it. I don't know that, I don't know that our, our objectivity and credibility are quite as well-respected with, with the legal issues that have been going on, but, you know, if Champaign County Healthcare Consumers, Chamber of Commerce, the IGPA at the U of I, various economics groups would probably be really good at looking at this, and a lot of national groups I'm sure are looking at why there's differences. So, you know, I'm all for.
I'm talking about Urbana residents, guys.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for following it and trying to figure out why, you know, it's higher, but I just don't know that, you know, us forming a task force.
Well, it'd be task force of people who have some expertise in this and interest in it.
And what, and what kind of actionable result would it, would it produce?
It would produce a discussion, a public discussion and a greater public understanding and some guidelines on how to change public policy at the federal and state level. That, that was what my intention is, because I think something needs to be done about this. If we don't do anything about it, it's just going to keep getting worse.
Charlie?
I put my comments on paper, I'm going to paraphrase them in just time. I urge you all to read the Time Magazine article that just came out, it's quite good. I really believe that our current healthcare system is a true national nightmare, but I thought it was real interesting that, that in one of the recommendations that the author makes on, in the Time article is competition. It's essential to have competition, and I don't think we really have that locally. And I, I think it's real interesting, and his inauguration address this morning, Governor Roner, to paraphrase, said that it's our ethical duty to minimize costs when spending our taxpayers' dollars. And I think that if we can develop a task force that works across units of government and gets those units of government to work together to, say, go out for a bid, that would be a very worthwhile outcome. And I don't know, you know, Laurel's spoken a little bit differently, but I would support something that maybe studies the issue, but also brings units of government together and, and goes out for bid, because I think if we have more people, you know, more, the more groups of, of governments involved, the lower our price will get. And so, you know, there's, you can read the rest of what I said here, but, you know, I, you know, Eric's, Eric's got a, a, a resolution too, which probably needs some wordsmithing or whatever, but, but, you know, I support it in the same sort of way. I think we need to improve competition, we have to deal, you know, we have to work with the hands we're dealt with, my cliche of the week. You know, we have this, University of Illinois is our big employer, we have two medical centers, you know, that sit in Urbana, and we're, we're just going to have to, to, to work with it and, and try to get them to bring their prices down and, and, and go from there. And, you know, if we can, if we can, you know, get something out of the whole biomedical complex on this campus, then, from, from campus and improve our bottom line, I'm all for that too. So I support both Eric's approach to this issue and the mayor's approach to this issue with a caveat that I want to see units of government come together and go out for bid.
I think that we've tried that, we, we've met with people about forming a cooperative, and it's hard to get them to do that, so I think there needs to be some more fundamental understanding about how to do it. And I think Urbana has done a reasonably good job, but I think that we're, we're still paying way more than we need to pay and that we can, than we can afford to pay. So there's that same sentiment in Danville, and so if we can get something done and enlighten people, I think that's how you get them to join, because we've already tried working with the county and with Charleston, and we've, we've had a series of meetings already over the past couple of years.
If I can respond to that. Yeah, so, so I, I would agree, but if, if, if you think this is a way to get people at the table so that they will work together and go out for bid together, then, then I can support this.
Dennis?
Well, one of the things you learn when you're dealing with budgets and contracts in the city is that you got the three main things that cost so much money. Eighty percent of the budget of the city is, is geared to personnel, and that has to do with wages, healthcare, and pensions. This is like a huge aspect, a huge part of the city budget's concern is, is that, you know, the, you know, we bargain, you know, with the, you know, various representatives of the employees about, you know, all these details, and in the public in general, they are swimming in healthcare debt. So if, if this task force can have some of the success that some of the other task forces have had, that the mayor has put together, and I'm thinking of the Neighborhood Safety Task Force, which resulted in so many improvements in city ordinances, dealing with so many aspects of concern in the community, I'm willing to let, you know, this thing happen. If, if they can come up with solutions and they can bring attention, public attention to clarify and perhaps remedy some of the, the issues that we struggle with here, I'm all for it.
Eric?
So, maybe both resolutions need some, some wordsmithing, the, or both forms of the resolution. I, I guess, I, I think I'm taken with Charlie's notion that if the knowledge that would be gained from studying might be used to create a larger cooperative negotiating unit that, that could do better, I, I would caution however, that, you know, if we averaged what we pay and what Danville pays, we would do worse. So we have to be sure that we have a good partner in the cooperative. But I, I, I think about, for example, I'm looking at Mike because I'm thinking about the electricity purchase cooperative, where if you're part of a larger network, you may be able to get a better deal. And if, and so if there is a way to use the, the knowledge to strengthen our negotiating or bargaining position, and if we could, you know, put that into the resolution as a, you know, as, as a desired goal, the, I mean, I, I suggested in my version of the resolution that a desired goal would be a biotech research park in Urbana associated with the new medical college. That would be a tangible goal, that would be a great benefit. If we can, if we can figure out how to negotiate better, perhaps by, you know, creating larger bargaining units for healthcare, that would be a tangible benefit. So, you know, maybe there is a, maybe there's a, a path towards these goals.
Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think that the medical school is its own issue.
I agree with that.
Yeah, these are really two separate things, and I like the co-op idea, but I also think there, there is a basic problem with the way we have structured healthcare in this country. And the author who's written the book and just wrote another article for Time Magazine, he's talking about competition. And there's some places that are just sort of a natural monopoly, so you have to deal with these things different ways. But I think, you know, buying things cooperatively would be a goal, but I'm even getting more basic than that. Like what does the current system cost us and how can we, what other questions do we want to ask? And then how can we make things better? That's really general.
Yeah. One, one of the ways to think about how to make things better is also to look at cases where it's worse. So, for example, if we were to look at Southern Illinois, which actually pays significantly higher health insurance previews than we do, you know, what went wrong there? Is that an exaggeration of our problem or is that something, you know, completely different?
Well, this is for input to the state, to the state legislature, and I think there, there's going to have to be congressional involvement in these things too, because it's a national issue. But I think you have to have citizens that understand the problem or at least know what questions to ask.
Okay, we, well, I'm, I'm totally for grassroots power, and I think this is where it starts, and Urbana could be the place where it begins. I don't know, I guess I suggest that, that we forward this resolution forward with the intent that, that there might be some wordsmithing to appear at the council meeting, the next council meeting.
I'd be happy to take your emails on, if you have wording changes.
I want to second that, but at the same time, I'm so tired at this point and emotionally drained that I would prefer to keep this and Eric's resolution, which needs to be put in a form that goes out in packets and all that, in committee for two weeks, but, and, and just have it come back, both of these resolutions come back in two weeks, all nicely fixed up with whatever input we can get.
Well, I'll take it. I'll adjust my, my motion to, to keep this in committee.
Could, could I make a friendly note, keep both, is that okay with you, Eric? Keep both resolutions here so we can just call this meeting adjourned here.
Let's do both of them and we'll keep both of them in committee. That would be the resolution by the mayor and the resolution added by Eric Jacobson.
Second. So the motion as seconded is to hold these resolutions in committee for further finessing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, and the meeting is adjourned.